At this stage, we move into open forum. And I see there's three cards, three people wanting to speak. Remind all the speakers that the time limit is four minutes. Please time yourself, so I don't have to become an over it. First one, Mr. Sansing.
Gary Sansing, 1517 East Jackson, citizen of the city. Happy New Year, all of you. And welcome to the new council people. And also to you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President.
First off, a couple of things. It's ongoing. It's allowing us to protest against the wars and occupation of Pensacola. I know it was sort of an embarrassing to some of us, but the issue hasn't gone away. Last Monday, well, to the public, let me speak about it. It was started out as Occupy Wall Street. Monday, eight major banks was fined $11 billion for some of their misdeeds. It's only a fraction of it. What is happening? And they don't bring you the facts. They allude to the trillions of dollars that has been lost. We do not, and believe me, I've tried several times, trying to figure out how this affects our city and county. When I drive around, I see more PSL signs, more vacancies. And we're gonna, it's, Mr. President's busy.
No, me, uh, no, clerk is.
Anyhow, the effects of this, we have no clue. But let me tell you, it's gonna take long term. In the '90s, Japan went through what we were, are going through. They hyped up their stocks, real estate, and 15 years later, they are still recovering, and the yen is slowly going down. So what do we look forward to? My issues hadn't changed. I love the city. It's, I call it paradise. But we gotta work on issues, not just with the city, not with just the school board, not with just the county. I mean, when I look back 20 years ago, my issues, the pollution, uneducated citizens. But our way of life and our citizens of the community, they're absolutely wonderful. They reach out and try and help. And as I, oh, I've been vacant a little bit, and I apologize. So normally, I focus on the county, and it's, now I'm back with you people. But we can make changes. And to get out of this, we're gonna have to educate our youth, help our neighbors, tighten our belts, and we'll get through it. We will. Now, a few things. Mr. Johnson, I gotta thank you. I'm a member of Brent Fisherman's, and he took a little of his money that little he gets and put it in the air conditioner at the clubhouse. And we needed it. In the summertime, it gets real hot in there, but thank you. And I just wanted to publicly thank you for this, and it's been a long time coming. But again, thank you. And he understands, he see me down there handing out on Fridays, it's called food and our bombs. It's gonna be, we don't know how many homeless. We don't know the number of foreclosure's gonna come. I mean, I had mentioned to you people, you gotta get with the city and county and all to figure out our budget. And again, Happy New Year, and welcome to the new ones.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sansing. Next person that wishes speaks is, is it Dixie, do you pronounce it Mees? I'm sorry.
My name is Dixie Mees, 10304 West Gregory Street. Those who don't know me, I was with Occupy. I'm with anything that has a good cause. You know my question. Mr. Mayor, where are you? According to the charter, you're to be at all of the meetings. I know we're on debate on that. And I do believe it was you, Dr. Wu, about six, eight months ago at council, you said it'd be a good idea to get all the council members together. And look at that charter. Find out what it really means. And I don't think you've all had that meeting yet, 'cause if you would've, I would've been Like Mr. Sansing, I love Pensacola. I purposely chose to retire here. I'm from Baltimore. I'm used to challenges. So nothing here that you can present to me, or whatever, is gonna deter me. But I want answers. I want answers to why, oh, I don't know. Why is it when I go to burn a CD, it takes three to, one to three days? And I know the equipment you're using doesn't take that long, and you're not getting all that many requests. But that's another area that I will pursue. Again, I don't know if Mr. Mayor's watching it on TV, but hello, I'd like to see you down here. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mees. Next person to speak is Mr. Martin Mueller.
Marlon Mueller, 1317 Martin Luther King Drive, Pensacola. As a new homeowner, one more time, new homeowner within the city limits, I am gonna start speaking to you as a citizen of Pensacola instead of a member of Occupy Pensacola. Not because I think there's anything wrong with Occupy Pensacola, just because what I'm gonna talk about is taken on as a personal thing. It's personally, not sponsored by Occupy. As Dixie Mees stated, the charter is clear. The mayor is supposed to attend every single city council meeting. This is the last time I'll be talking about it here, because before the end of the year last year, I sent a demand letter to the mayor, you know, basically demanding that he come, that he, that he announced that he realizes that he needs to come, and that he comes to every meeting. I have not heard back. There has been no, nothing, you know, none of my demands have been met. So I'm, at my next convenience, I'm gonna take it to the next step and file with the Attorney General of the state of Florida. So, you know, he might've thought that I was joking around, but I can think of a number of reasons, other than the fact that he, that the charter says that he's supposed to be here, a number of reasons why he should be here. For one thing, even if he watches it on TV, or gets his update from Mr. Reynolds, who I'm sure gives a thorough update, he seems like a really good guy. When something's going on here, you cannot judge from the video, or from an update, what the audience's reaction is to things. I think it's very important that he be here for that. I also think that when he's working on the budget, that he shouldn't be working in a vacuum. And I think without being here, listening to us, I would've liked to have him here last time he was working on the budget. I have some things that I think should be, you know, looked at, and some of the things that he's done that have been just totally ridiculous, that he spent a million dollars on, that are totally ridiculous. I would like to have that, at least be able to stand up here and say that, and let him see what the audience thinks. Because when it's just one guy, it's not all that powerful. But when you can actually sit here and see, you know, what the audience is reacting, how they're reacting, I think that's powerful. So having not gotten any response back from the mayor, or the mayor's office, or the mayor's attorney, as of next week, which is probably the closest I'll be able to get to it, I will be filing with the state attorney. Thank you, bye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mueller. Mr. Mueller, before we leave, Councilwoman Myers has indicated she wanted to speak, and I don't know if she wants to ask you a question or not. Councilwoman Myers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Actually, I had my light on for the previous speaker.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And I just wanted to let, well, her and Mr. Mueller both know that I appreciate your dedication, coming down here. Almost every council meeting, it seems like I see you, and I really appreciate your interest in civic affairs. But the previous speaker asked us when we were going to have the meeting, a meeting that Councilman Gerald's had suggested we have to discuss, the charter. And I think that's a, that's a good idea. And if you are around after the council meeting, I would like to talk to you about that. Because even if council doesn't, I'm willing to meet with citizens and have a charter study group. Okay?
Thank you very much. Council Johnson.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. President. And it's very, it's very good to hear Mr. Mueller says that he won't be bringing this issue up again. I don't know how the city council can demand the mayor attend these meetings, and so I'm looking forward to the resolution that Mr. Mueller and his lawsuit, or contacting the state attorney, will bring to this issue, because it seems to be brought up often here. And I don't know that this city council can demand the mayor to be here. So to continually bring it up, and I think it's gonna be, it'd be a good thing for you to file, file with the state attorney's office, to hire an attorney, and to bring this to resolution, because you bring it up often here. And I don't know what the city council can do to demand the mayor to be here. So for you to continually bring it up to us, I don't know if that's very productive. So I'll look forward to the resolution that will be brought forth when you get this before judge, and get this, the answer to this question. Thank you.
No, no, I think he was just making a statement. But thank you very much, Mr. Mueller. Appreciate it very much, sir. One quick statement before.
Can I just say one thing? I think it appear, only because this is where he's supposed to be.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Mueller.
Now, there are town hall meetings, too, that we can be brought up in front of the mayor. Thank you.
Uh, please, let's, thank you very much. Just before we move on to the next subject, Mrs. Sansing, as you were talking, it appeared that I was perhaps not paying full attention. What happens is, anybody who wants to speak has to fill out a blue card. And as they come in, the clerk is nice enough, the clerk's nice enough to bring them up. The dilemma we have is that people want to speak to different issues, so it's a matter of making sure that the card not only gets inserted, but gets inserted in the proper place. And so I apologize if it looked like I was being rude. What we're trying to do is make sure that we're fair to everybody, and everybody who would like to have an opportunity to speak has that opportunity. So if it appeared to be rude, I do apologize to you. Okay, moving on, is approval of the minutes.
You have the approval.
Okay, moved to second. Please vote.
Ms. Myers.
Okay, passes unanimously. Awards and presentation, there are none tonight, which moves us now into the area of public hearings. Madam Clerk, would you please read the subject at the first public hearing?
Item 6A is a public hearing to consider. Request for zoning map amendment, I Street.
Okay, and at this time, Mr. Reynolds, is there, would you like to call on staff to make a presentation?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you very much. And if we could have Ms. Sherri Myers come up and talk about this issue?
Morris.
Morris? Sorry.
Don't feel bad, Mr. Johnson. Thank you, Mr. Reynolds, members of council. The first public hearing this evening is a request for a zoning map amendment on I Street. If you see, this is just north of Garden Street, and now that we have our screen fixed, the public can see, too. The hatched area here is the area that is being requested for a zoning amendment. The C3 zoning line is here, along Garden Street, and does extend mid-block, in the same block where this property is located. However, this area here, that includes the hatched area, is currently zoned C1, which is a more restrictive commercial zoning district. It's more based in retail uses, that type of thing. It allows offices, restaurants, banks, and a variety of commercial uses. The applicant is requesting to have a commercial warehouse use at this location, which the C3 district that is to, located to the south on Garden Street, would permit, but the property in question, which is zone C1, would not permit, which necessitates a zoning map amendment. The future land use is currently commercial, which does not need changing. So this is only an amendment to the zoning map. If approved, the future land use designation would remain the same. This is your aerial showing of the property in question, and we also have some photographs of the property here, that show the actual site of the rezoning. This is south of the rezoning site. This is immediately to the north of the rezoning site. And this is the east side of I Street, which you see some residential uses here. And again, the east side of I Street, which are some residential uses as well. The planning board reviewed this item, and the decision was uncharacteristically split, because we do have a vacancy currently on the board. There are seven members, but currently, we only have six seats filled. So in two separate votes, you had a vote of three to deny, and a vote of three to approve. So that is the recommendation that they forwarded to you, was that they were split in their decision as to a recommendation to city council. The request for a zoning map amendment, as council is aware, but I'll reiterate for the new members, because they are proposing a warehouse use, that, that's what the applicant is stating, that the proposed use of the property would be. However, you do have to keep in mind that, once you change the zoning, we are not able to dictate what use goes there. The zoning is changed, and any use permitted under the C3 district and the C2 district, which is more permissive than the C1, which currently is in place at this location, would be allowed. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Okay, is there any questions of the staff from the council? Okay, at this stage, we'll then move into getting input from the audience. We have, I believe, seven people that have indicated they would like to speak to this issue. If you are basically going to say what the person in front of you has already said, for the sake of brevity, please say so, and that would save some time. For the first person that would like to speak is Carolyn Fish.
I live at 1610 West Chase, which is around the corner from that lot. I was at the planning board meeting with a petition signed by 37 of my neighbors, so I'm here with their confidence and with their blessing. As she was saying, it's already zone C1, which doesn't restrict business, it's not anti-business, it's something that we would like to see in our neighborhood. What I think some of the people on the planning board didn't realize is, there's a lot of families that move into this neighborhood, and they're trying to fix it up, trying to make it look nice, and having a warehouse there works against what we're trying to do with this neighborhood. I honestly got a little discouraged at the planning board meeting. It seemed a lot like who you know is very important. A lot of people on the board are, they know the builder who is going to put the warehouse there, and that seemed to be a pretty huge deciding factor, along with the pictures that he provided of what his plans are for the warehouse. But I'd like to stress to you guys that it's not specifically the warehouse that we don't want, it's the C3 zoning that allows for anything in C3, anything in C2, including industrial laundry, light metal fabrication. So that kind of thing could be butting right against people's backyards, you know, less than 100 feet from my house. There's children there, there's families there. It's, that type of facility just doesn't belong in a neighborhood. And, you know, it's one thing to be on the outside of the neighborhood and not know or not care, but I live there. Like I said, I've got the confidence of almost 40 people behind me, who also do not want this. Signed my petition, and we would like to see the city council do what the people want, rather than look at a pretty picture of what someone says they're gonna build. No offense to the contractor, I'm sure he's great, but we can't just take our word, or can't take his word for it, we can't take anybody's word for it. All we can do is say what we don't want to include in our neighborhood. And that C3 zoning is just too much. So that's what I'd say. Thanks.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Jim Fleming. Following Mr. Fleming will be Jerry Maguire.
Can you take a joke? I am not looking for the mayor. Okay, I'm Jim Fleming, I live on 1661 West Garden Street, not far from Carolyn Fish. I'm one of the 30-odd people signed her petition. I'm not a native, but I've been in and out of Pensacola for, going on 43 years, since I first came here for flight school. My wife and her family have been in that neighborhood, going on 100 years. Okay, I learned from Ms. Fish a while ago, and this is anecdotal to me, although I trust her, recently, that a zoning request for a used car dealer to locate on F Street, necessitating a zoning change, was disapproved. When I came here, right across from St. Stephen's Church, a couple of blocks to the west, was a very old used car dealership, well-respected, well-patronized, Girards, which my wife's family has fond memories of, honest people. And they did no harm, and the city seems to have survived. Likewise, just to the west of Pace, right outside city limits, I think, years ago, there was a Toyota and Fiat dealer there. Yeah, and they're gone, the building has since burned, it's an eyesore, but except for the eyesore, I think the county has survived. I dread thinking of what could locate in this C3 rezoned building, a warehouse, if the business fails. And they are in the business of storing construction materials. Yesterday or day before, it appears the building trade took a hit in the form of banks being heavily more regulated as to what they can loan out. There may be far less requirement to store building materials, which I think are perfectly innocent and harmless. Who knows what would locate in there? This is not a question to any individual, council member, or staffer, or the greater audience, as citizens. But I ask you in general, through this hearing, if you speak on this Six Alpha item, I'd like you to let us all know what you've heard of people's opinions on this in the last couple of months, since we had the first meeting. That would be opinions by written documentation, or face-to-face, people who told you this or that, because you're gonna get a good feel for what we, who have shown up here, are going to give you face-to-face. We'd like to be represented. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Fleming. The next speaker that we have is Mr. Maguire, Jerry Maguire.
Yes, Jerry Maguire, JMA Engineering Services, Pace, Florida. Anyhow, I'm gonna defer, if I can, to the owner right now, Mr. Jeremy Brown. I'm kinda here to answer any technical questions that may come up and all, but I do represent Mr. Brown on quite a few projects.
Now, Mr. Brown is scheduled to speak or later, is, will this be considered your time, or?
Yes, sir. President, that'll be fine. President, council, thank you for your time. I am Jeremy Brown. My business is located at 801 West Roman Street. I am a commercial general contractor here in Pensacola, Florida. The use of the property will be a office, a, it's a 5,000-square-foot building. What we are proposing is 1,000 square foot of that to be office space, and the other 4,000 square feet to be warehouse space. The reason, which will be occupied by my construction company, the reason for the rezoning request is that C1 and C2 mandate that the building be more than 50% office space. I currently meet, I've been in pre-application meeting with staff, I currently meet the requirement to, in C1 and C2 zoning, when you look at the exterior of the building. So the only hang-up, and the only reason for my request for rezoning, is to, is to be able to build 1,000 square feet of office space inside the building, and other than having to build more than 50%, just because I don't need that much. They are correct, we are a construction company, we will be storing materials there. It will be adding a couple of jobs, it'll be an opportunity for us to set superintendents down there, that do work, you know, within an hour of that place, so they can, of our facility, so they can do takeoff on the plans. It won't be a lot of material stored there, it'll only be things that we consider long lead items in our business, cabinets, doors, hardware, things of that nature. So my request is, is to, is to take it to C3, only for the office space requirement. I've been back and met with, with staff to try to find another way around that. I understand the scare of the, of the public for outside storage, that's not something that I, that I have to have, or that's not my intention to rezoning. So I'll be glad to answer any questions. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Brown. Next speaker is Robert Martin. And Mr. Martin will be followed by Larry Houser.
Different issue, Mr. President, than both those, flat, 6C.
They're for the Bay Boulevard.
I'm sorry.
They're for 6C. They put the wrong number on their card.
Before we go to the next speaker, Mr. Amston wanted to speak during open forum, and that was when Mr. Sansing and I was having the exchange, and the cards were coming in, and somehow, I did not allow you to speak during that time period. However, we do have open forum at the end of the meeting, and you're certainly free to speak at that time. Okay, next speaker is Mr. Fred Gunter. And he will be followed by Mr. Sansing.
Mr. President, members of council, thank you. I did want to disclose that I was a real estate broker and listing agent for the subject property, which is part of the.
Mr. Gunner, I had a card sitting in front of a light, and the vice president just indicated to me that Mr. Spencer wanted to speak.
Yeah, absolutely.
Mr. President, I'm sorry if this seems out of order, but I'm suggesting that when we finish this particular item, since the individual did properly submit the card, would you please consider, after this item, just letting this person speak, as though they were at the beginning of open forum?
I would, except that we're so far into the process, and I think the best thing to do, I appreciate your suggestions. to do, I appreciate your suggestions, very kind of you. We do have open forum at the end, and the person still will be able to have the opportunity to speak. But I do appreciate you trying to resolve it. Thank you very much. Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Gunner does not count against your time.
Not a problem. Anyway, so that was part of that former Leolios property, which was demolished due to code enforcement issues before Mr. Brown purchased it, you know. And I'm also chairman of the zoning board of adjustment, I've been on the board for about five years now, and served with Councilman Tahar, and you can ask him that, you know, many of the requests that, that come before us, you know, are a result of an antiquated code, you know, for example, requests, and, and first of all, you know, that's not a criticism of staff, or Ms. Morris, or the planning board, or anything, it's just, you know, something that has to be looked at, you know, and, and change as things evolve. For example, you know, docks and boathouses on Biotar routinely, you know, approved, you know, variances for larger boathouses and that kind of thing, just because the size of boats have evolved, you know, over the years. You know, and so when Mr. Brown called me and, you know, mentioned that, you know, he, he was going to need a C3 zoning for office and storage, you know, that seemed particularly onerous to me, so I just made a few calls, and, and basically, for example, in Santa Rosa County, you know, the HCD zoning, which is, you know, very comparable to our C1 zoning, it's a general, you know, commercial district, you know, basically services limited expressly to establishments where activities and storage are contained in an enclosed building are allowed in that zoning, which is exactly, you know, what Mr. Brown is asking. You know, and, and Escambia County, you know, wholesale warehousing, you know, less than 10,000 square feet is allowed in a C1 zoning, a retail commercial district. And it, and just for example, like in the city, you know, because I called Ms. Morris about it today and asked what the problem was, and it was that it was, you know, mainly being used as stor-, more storage than office, but as an example, you know, if, if, you know, I think part, at least from what Mr., way Mr. Brown described it, you know, he'd be storing building materials, cabinetry, lighting, things of that nature in there, so he could have it ahead of time and get things built, you know, quickly. You know, if he was selling cabinets, selling lighting, all those same items, you know, he could do that in the zoning that he has now. And for like a C2 zoning, he could actually open a cabinet shop and build and create cabinets, and all the noise and, you know, everything, congestion that goes along with that, and yet just to do an office and storage, you know, they're actually requiring a C3 zoning, and, and from my understanding, this is also a result of the residential commercial district being recently eliminated, you know, that was just a butt between C2 and C3, you know, to me, that would have been a happy medium. That allowed warehousing in a, in a residential commercial district, but unfortunately, because the way the code's written, you know, he's going to require a C3 zoning just to do office and warehouse, which, you know, is totally out of line with what everybody else around here is doing. So, you know, and I can understand the neighbor's concern, but, you know, for example, I mean, Mr. Brown, I don't know if you know, he, he did Marquis de Romano, the, well, and basically the only Class A office space that's probably been developed in the city for, you know, many years, and, and I know that Kyler Cole, who was with the city, at his, when he was out making his presentations, would always talk about that. It's a beautiful development, that was basically a dilapidated warehouse that he can, you know, converted to Class A office. And, you know, I know that he'll do, you know, a top-notch product, and that's why I'm here, you know, supporting him. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gunner. Mr. Sansing?
Whenever there's, I mean, zone changing disturbs me, bothers me, when something happens, I look at the neighborhood, what is their feelings about this? And right off the bat, I'm thinking of the project just north of the Trussell on 17th, when neighbors came from three blocks around to fight building, I think a condominium on 17th. It was one of the most civil, diplomatic, and they, one of their attorneys was so eloquent, it was unbelievable. You had one developer, but the city went along with it. Thank God it's not there anymore, because it would be like a lot of other condos around sitting vacant. Banks and citizens would be paying for this. Now, you've got to take into concern the citizens, or the neighbors. And one thing, at the moment, probably the city doesn't need, is more zone changing in commercial property. I mean, how much commercial property is sitting vacant? And in the end, who's going to pay for it? Taxpayers. I mean, they got a way of misleading us, I mean, Madison Avenue and K Street, that's a lobby in Washington. They've got some good lobbies, but taxpayers will pay, trillions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sansing.
Don't forget the neighbors.
Okay. Next speaker I have is Charlie, and please excuse me if I mispronounce the name, it's
President Wu, other council members, my name is Charles Stametolos, some people know me as Chuck. I'm born and raised in this town, and there's three issues I have with what's going on here. First of all, I own a property at 1328 West Garden Street, which is properly zoned to do whatever I want to do, because it's commercial, and that's not the only problem I have with this today. I am a member and council member of the Greek Orthodox Church, which is less than a block away, that was built in 1905, and I think this really, you know, we've worked very hard to improve our church, we just put $35,000 into staples to make the lights look better, and yada, yada. So I actually have already spoke to Father Matthew Carter and Jim Mohammed, the President, and I am representing the Greek Orthodox Church a block away. And the other reason I have a personal interest here is, prior to this property going under contract with these people, I had a contract on this property signed to buy it, and I was put through the wringers. Now, this really isn't the real reason I'm here, I'm on the real reason now, is because if somebody wanted to buy it for something, it should have been zoned right, or there's plenty of property downtown. But I put an offer to purchase it, and my idea was to buy it, give the back lots to the church, because they need more parking for the festival, and I was going to rehab the front building, because I was born and raised knowing the Leolio family, and I thought we were going to put a little plaque on the corner of it saying John Leolio, in memory of John Leolio. And since then, he's passed away, so that was a true thing, and I have someone here with me that can expound all my concerns, if you want to hear it. I really have nothing else to say, other than what I've said, and I don't want to take any more time, because it seems like there's a lot of people that have a problem with this. I appreciate being able to get before you, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman?
Just one, one moment, if you would, I'd like to ask you a question. I just want clarification, one more time, how close this property is to your church?
If you come out of my front door in the church, the next block over is this lot, and if they put up this type of a building, you're going to see it very easily from our church, and I think it's going to damage something that's been put there since 1905, and I think they can find another piece. There's a lot of property downtown on sale right now, so my thing is, if it wasn't zoned properly, why to change, why you want to change it?
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you. Okay, this stage is now in council's hand. Are any council members who would like to speak to this issue? Vice President Nguyen?
Yes, I do have a couple of questions here. The first, how long has the lot been vacant, or not in use?
Councilwoman Canada Nguyen, I don't have the exact number on that, but it, I mean, it hasn't been in use for a number of years, and, and it was recently demolished, so it's been a good while since it was in, in being utilized for a commercial purpose.
Okay, thank you. This, I went by the property the other day, and drove up and around the particular property, and I too, you know, I read the planning board's minutes and comments and everything that was made, and so when I went, I was looking at, you know, what's the issue? Are we talking about a company that's going to come here and bring an 18-wheeler in there and pull supplies there, or will the large construction materials, metals, and everything be placed on the outside, so that it could be an eyesore? You know, what's the major issue? Because the lot itself is an eyesore, just the lot itself. It does nothing to improve the neighborhood at all. It is there. So, and then I drove around the neighborhood itself to see actually the other things there. Of course, the cemetery is down the street, you have Legion Field, which has lots of activities going on there at various times of the season, and the Greek Orthodox Church, who has its major festival there. So, here is a matter of trust. If you change the zoning, can we trust this business to do what it says? Because that C3 zoning includes other things that we may not want. And so can we trust the people to do what we say? Because that's what it comes down to. It comes down to, can we trust them? So then I drove around, because I've been on the council before, and we've had some major issues with zoning and other activities. So I went to, over there off of Savanti Street, Savanti Street and Davis Highway, there was a big issue when they put the storage building there, because the storage building looks like a storage facility. But when they finished that particular building, that particular building did not take away from that historic neighborhood there. It, it was landscaped nicely, and of course, at the moment, they're doing what they say. Because this is what this is. It's a matter of trust, whether or not if you agree to allow the changing of the zone, will they continue to keep it that way, or will one day some monster of some idea comes there, and we can't do anything about it as citizens? So I went there. Also, not far from that, we had an issue about the veterinarian clinic that was in that area, and neighbors were really too concerned about whether or not that type of business was conducive to their neighborhood, was you're going to have a lot of animals and dogs yelling and screaming at 2:00, and barking at 2:00 at night, were you going to have all of those things? And so then I left there, and I went up on Ninth Avenue, where it was a, a office building, but however, when they built the structure, the structure in the back that, that anchored the neighborhood was not conducive to the neighborhood. But the business began to landscape it, and now it, it too complimented the neighborhood. So I can't say whether or not, whatever business you put up, in whatever zoning that you have, because there are multiple facilities, and different types of businesses can go into one zoning. But I do know that this lot has been vacant for a while, it is an eyesore. We have an entrepreneur, a businessperson, that wants to spend money on a vacant lot that does not complement the neighborhood at all. And so how do I, as a council member, discourage economic development? Or how can I encourage economic development here? And this would do something that's much, much needed in that particular area. Am I able to say that this person will never ever, or any business is going to be there? That we can trust, we can't even say that to any business here in Pensacola, for that matter. So here again, I'm like a planning board, I'm torn, I want to listen to what my other council member says, but I, I think that with the landscaping, and from my understanding, there will be landscaping on this property, I'm concerned about whether or not, what type of vehicles are going to be here and coming in there, if it's going to be a noise issue. But this neighborhood is used to noise issues. It lives above Legion Field, where I have gone there and had a great time, and everything. So, it, again, we're worried about that trust issue, whether or not this particular businessperson is going to keep their word. And we have to worry about that with every business that goes off. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Vice President, Councilman Johnson?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. President. And in full disclosure, I met with Mr. Brown, and don't, I want to fully disclose that, and I also visited the site. I also want to disclose that I know Dr. Stametolos, I've known him for most of my life. So I've got friends on both sides of this issue, as, as I do often, sitting before you today. There would be an issue up later on, that I have friends on both sides of the issue. So, I don't, I, to imply that it's because you, who you know, or any of that, is just incorrect for, for my decision here today on this particular issue. But what I, what I, I kind of go along with, with Vice President Canada Nguyen, we have a, we have a site that's a, that's an eyesore. It's a, it's a concrete lot. It's, stormwater hits it, runs in the drains, and ends up in our waterways, it's a very unattractive site. I believe, after looking at the site, driving around there, and again, I don't know Mr. Brown well, but looking at the site, I believe what Mr. Brown proposes, he could actually do on the site, in front of this particular site, just feet, just very few feet away from this site, that he proposed to do in this building. I'm familiar with Mr. Brown's other developments in town, because I enjoy eating at the cactus flower. I think that the cactus flower property is one of the most attractive in Pensacola, there on 12th Avenue, that, that strip center there with the oak trees that he's planted, and the beautiful development there that he took, a, a site that needed some, some rehab, and did an excellent job. His office also attests to that quality development in our community. When we deny this gentleman this opportunity to do economic development in our community, and not put this building on the tax rolls, which will help offset some of the costs that we enjoy here as citizens of the city of Pensacola, and not give this a chance to put this on the tax rolls, I think that, that's, our citizens bear that. But looking at the site, it's a very unattractive site, thinking that just feet away, that he could do this very, very same development, just, just, just feet away there on the corner, I believe is, is zoned to see one there, excuse me, C3 there on your map. And so, you know, it's just a tough decision. I consider Dr. Stametolos a good friend of mine, and understand the church is just blocks away, or a block away, and I just, you know, I'm struggling with this one, as I think I will many of them tonight, but, but right now, I, I just, you know, I believe I'm going to be able to support this, this zoning change request. I haven't heard anything to change my mind. I understand there's a petition with 40 people on it, and, but again, I know, I, I just believe that, the big picture, I believe it's the right thing to do when I look at all, all options. Thank you.
Okay, next light I see is Councilman Tahar. There's also a person in the public that has indicated they'd like to speak. Would you like to speak first?
I think so.
Okay. Gina Boyston.
Can you hear me? I'm Gina Boyston. Mr. President, council members, thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak this evening. I'm here on several levels, actually. I've been a downtown business owner for many, many years. I own property on J Street, which is adjacent to the building, the proposed building. My client, Dr. Stametolos, and I worked tirelessly for almost a year to purchase this piece of property. We went through planning and, and so forth, and negotiations broke down, we, we were not able to- We, we were not able to purchase the property, much to our chagrin. It's a piece that the, the church really desperately wanted and, um, and we were gonna restore the, the building on the corner, which has been demolished, the old ELEs property, and then resurface and beautify the, the back portion as well. Uh, the church is still trying to buy some properties in the area. They've bought several properties and are trying to expand their campus for the future. I, I don't know if you've ever been to the Greek Orthodox Church Festival in October, but it's, it's an amazing event and they really need additional campus. Unfortunately, we weren't able to buy that piece of property. The neighbors have come forth and said that they don't want this. It's in their neighborhood. If you look at the map, you see lots of tiny, small lots. Those represent people's lives, their children, and when you see the big green piece of property there, that, that's a, a huge footprint in a small, little neighborhood where people are buying these homes, renovating these homes, raising their children here. There are lots of properties in downtown surrounding area that would be prime for, for this type of development. I just don't think it's right for this small, little neighborhood with a, with a long-time church, early nineteen hundreds. Um, once it goes there, it can never go back. I'm sure this gentleman has great plans for it and, and you're talking about Ms. Canada-Win trust, but what about if he sells it? What about the next owner? So i- i- it's a succession thing that, that you may not have any control over in the future. So, um, those are my thoughts and I hope that you'll weigh them and consider them and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Councilman Tahar.
Thank you, Mr. President. My issue with, with this particular piece is, and also in, in general, is that there, to me, the, the city of Pensacola has a zoning issue as far as commercial property goes and, and Mr. Gunther explained it pretty well, that, that we have property that's zoned C-one, that, 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 and C-two now, which I just found out, which I, is, is unfortunate, that you can't have a small storage warehouse on that, that would not be a nuisance to anybody. And, and I, I don't understand and, and to me, it reflects a problem that we have to address and I, and I, I plan on looking into it further, but, uh, you know, you go in the county, you go anywhere else in, in, in the panhandle and you see small warehouses on, you know, commer- commercial property. And it just, uh, I think, uh, I served on the varian's ward for a while and this seems like a perfect issue for a variance because I think C-three would be bad because, you know, you, you can have outstore- outside storage, but unfortunately, that's the only path that we have to take and I, and I feel like that, that, that there's some undue burden on the applicant and I, I, I wish that we could change it and just say, "We're not gonna change the zoning, we just wanna let you build it just because, you know, it should be allowed in C-one, but we can't do that." So the only way to rectify the actual situation is to, to change the zoning, so I, I will be supporting this, but, uh, thank you.
Okay. Okay, Councilwoman Pratt.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. First, before I speak, um, I would like to know if there's anyone prepared to make a motion so that we can actually have the conversation. Is there anyone who would like to move it?
I'll make the motion.
Motion, yeah. Don't we do a motion later? It's coming up later.
Well, don't we, this is time for questions and now we're discussing it, is that?
Public hearing.
Okay. Uh, then I'll, I'll make my points. Um, uh, anyway, um, this one is one of our fun ones. As, as President Wu likes to say, I don't like that we always have to deal with the hard ones, but the hard ones are the ones that we deal with. If they were easy, they would've been dealt with elsewhere. Um, as, as has been mentioned, uh, Mr. Gunther mentioned the antiquated code. This is, this is a funny funky thing. If he just put in a few more desks, when the inspectors came, he could be approved. Um, and so, you know, whether we like the building, whether we like the idea of trucks on that street, all of that is really irrelevant. If he had a few more, if he put in a few more square feet of office space, he could have this. And so, um, I think that we're in an odd situation. As Vice President, um, Canada-Win said, that, you know, we trust the business owner. I, I have great respect for him and everything he's done, but unfortunately, someday, he's not gonna own that property and somebody else is gonna come in and they're gonna say, "This is zoned C-three, I can put in a tattoo parlor and, or whatever, um, is in the C-three." And so, um, unfortunately, I think with the way the world is, I know we have a few lawyers in the audience tonight, you can trust all you want, but if it's not written down, it's not there. And so if we go ahead and change this to C-three zoning, I think that it, it opens the door for almost anything in that. And so while we probably have no objection to the proposed use, it, that's not what we're talking about tonight. We're talking about all C-three zoning and what could go in that neighborhood. And I think about the people in that neighborhood waking up every morning to what's in a C-three and I don't think that that would be attractive to them. While the property is an eyesore now, I think that, that the alternatives are not great for them either, if you just go with that, we're, all we're doing is changing it to C-three. So while I think this is a great idea and I would love to see that kind of development happen, I think that changing the zoning is, is sort of short-sighted in order to get this in there. And I think that, that it really begs us to take a good look at what are our, what are our zoning codes and, um, what sort of things do we really intend to be allowed in a neighborhood and, and in, you know, in this situation? Because you can build the same building with a little more office space and, and have it allowed, so. And additionally, I mean, I understand that, you know, this isn't necessarily what we want on Garden Street either. We want retail and things like that, but this is allowed on, in the C-three on Garden Street. And, and I, I understand the planning board went back and forth on that, that they'd rather have this sort of off Garden Street, but I think that for the residents, that it, it's important to take in consideration, all of the, the can of worms we're gonna open if we go to C-three. Thank you.
Okay. Um, I see two lights on, Vice President Winds and, uh, Councilman Myers. Councilwoman Myers, I do not believe has spoken to this issue, but before either one of y'all have spoke, uh, speak, Mr. Dr. Stamatolos would like to speak again. Would y'all allow him to speak at this time or would y'all like to speak first?
I would like Ms. Myers to speak. She hasn't spoken on this issue.
Right, but I mean, there's a gentleman in the audience that's requested to speak. Would you, whether we speak first or allow him to speak at this time?
Uh, he can speak.
Okay.
Thank you for letting me address you again. I'm not gonna go through all the formalities, but the thing that I'm really, I think that needs to be known about this property, um, my realtor friend that helped me put an accepted contract on this property and it took hours and hours to get this accepted. We came into a bottleneck with the city attorney. I spent at least ten thousand dollars plus my hours and hours of time trying to buy this property and if I would've been successful, I would've rehabbed this building and it would've been part of our history of the Greek Orthodox Church. Now, having said that, and I'm not trying to make any enemies here, if anybody thinks they're out of any money on this property, and Gina's already explained to me what it was purchased for, I own a, I would be willing to pay exactly what they paid for this property with the thought of gifting it to the Greek Orthodox Church or keeping it by myself and letting them park there for free. If I was, if the, if the people that owned the property saw fit and I would direct you to Gina Boylston, I own a property two blocks away that would be a great optometrist office and a vacant lot right behind it.
Doctor, doctor, if you would permit me, sir. The issue at hand is speaking to or against the zone?
I'm a hundred percent against it and I've got two-hundred-and-fifty church members that are against it and I think it's ridiculous for anybody to think about being for this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, Councilwoman Myers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this, this really is, um, a, a difficult decision to make because I, I can really appreciate both, both sides. The, the, the issue that I'm concerned about though is, I think for me, uh, on dealing with zoning matters, trust has to be taken off of the table. Because it's, it's real simple. If we change, allow the zoning to change, it's, it's changed. And it can't, I guess it could be undone, but the owner can do whatever he wants to do within that zoning requirement. He can also sell the property. And so I agree with Councilwoman Pratt that we are opening probably a can of worms if we do this. And so I'm, I'm inclined not to support it, even though I would like, like to. Um, I think, um, there are too many unknowns in terms of the future for this neighborhood and, uh, so I, I, I won't be supporting it.
Thank you very much, Vice President.
Uh, yes, and I, I just wanted to say that this right now, for this neighborhood now, the church, the Greek Orthodox Church, uh, they've spoken twice, even though they say that, uh, it is not about, uh, their proposal not being accepted, uh, it, that proposal of, often comes up. And again, I'm split, uh, on this issue because the zoning, when we look at the zoning, which we cannot get into tonight, uh, in, in reference to that, we have to look at all of it, uh, the zoning here has again stopped development in our area. And we, and, and like one of the, uh, neighbors has stated, we have a lot of vacant lots in our downtown area and probably in neighborhoods. They are vacant, they are blighted and nothing happens on them. And nothing has happened here on this one either. So I just wanted to remind that even though, uh, and, and of course, it's, it's, trust is not the bottom line here, it is also economic development for this particular area and this particular neighborhood. Whether or not this particular building would be an eyesore or even the zoning would bring such a significant change to this neighborhood. So, uh, thank you.
Okay. I have one question for, uh, for you and, uh, i- if I understand the situation correctly, the gentleman would like the zoning change mainly because of the amount of space allocated to storage versus office. If I understand the neighbors correctly, their objection is to changing the zoning itself. Is there a way to allow the zoning to remain the way it is and allow an exception for the amount of space that he would like to have for storage?
Council President Wu, um, if I could, um, let me clarify the, the space issue. Um, in our meetings with, uh, the applicant, um, the question came down to what are you proposing? What's the land use? Um, if it was an, uh, there's two land uses or uses going on within the structure that he's proposing. One is an office space and one is commercial contractor storage. Office space is permitted in R-two, R-N-C, C-one, C-two-A, C-two, C-three. That would not be an issue. Uh, the, the issue was that there's not a set standard in our code that says you have to have fifty percent office space. It's that we can't call something an office if seventy-five percent or more of it is commercial warehousing. Um, commercial warehousing is placed elsewhere in the code that's in a more intense commercial district. Uh, so it was just coming down to what do we call it? What are you proposing? Um, so there's not really a provision to say, "We can give you an exception to allow you, um, more warehousing space than office." It just, it, it's where the tipping point is to what the land use actually is and whether or not it's permitted in that zoning district. Um, also, the permitted uses in our commercial districts were just updated last summer, so they're probably the least antiquated section of our code. We, we just got done finishing an eight-month process to put all these commercial uses where we thought they belonged. It was very, um, public input-intensive at the planning board level. Uh, so if, if, if council wants us to revisit that, wants the planning board to revisit that, we certainly can, uh, but that's, that's pretty fresh as far as a revision. And, uh, the, the RC district was removed. Um, there were only two parcels in the city that were zoned RC. Anything that was in RC was moved to C-three because it was the next district. Um, but there's, there's not a way under our provisions in our code, um, administratively, to take it to zoning board or anything like that and, and say, "Let them just have a little less office and a little more warehouse," because the, it's the commercial warehousing that isn't permitted as the main primary use in C-three, or in C-one, rather. They would need C-three to do that.
Thank you very much. Okay, any other council member would like to speak to the issue? Okay, do I hear, uh, yes, Councilman Spencer.
I just need to point out that I have to refrain from voting due to a conflict.
Okay. Okay, any, any other council member? Okay, in this case, do I hear a motion? So at least we can vote on the issue.
I'll make the motion so that we can vote on it.
Motion moved to, to approve. Do we have a second?
Was that to approve?
Oh, oh, no, not to approve.
Quick question. What are we voting on later?
I'm sorry.
Uh, if, if, I guess I'm a little confused 'cause in the agenda, this comes back up under first reading? Yeah. Um, let me get to it.
Well, I don't know if it can, yeah, I don't know if it can.
Under ordinance is its first reading. Isn't that when we would vote? Isn't, this is just a discussion, I'm, I guess I would.
No. If, if, we usually, we vote in the public hearing and then if we approve it in the public hearing, then we do it as first reading. If it fails, it won't be on first reading, so we do take the vote now.
Does that help?
In other words, if it doesn't get passed here, it doesn't appear here. That's right. Uh, for the viewing audience, uh, uh, Councilman Tahar is a new council member and as all of us, we're, we're all learning, so be patient with us. Yes, thank you, Councilman. It's a good question, though. Okay, so, uh, we have it moved to approve. Do we have a second?
Uh, Mr. President, we have a motion on, she wants the clarity for the, of the motion and the motion is that we change this, uh, zoning from, uh, the C-one to the C-three. Is that correct?
Uh, yeah, that, that, that is the request that the applicant put before you.
It is a request, so that is the motion that I made and we needed a second on that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a, okay. Now, any other discussion? Yes, Councilman.
I guess I, I'll disclose that I went by and I saw Mr. Brown. I went up to the area and I'm in the real estate business and just looking at the area up there and that particular space, uh, I don't see where anyone would come in and develop that into a residential area, especially with the removal of the parking lot and probably the values of the houses that are already in the area. I couldn't see where, if the, if it didn't belong to Mr. Brown, there would be any further movement on the property at this time to be incorporated into, uh, housing in the neighborhood.
Okay. Vice President?
Uh, no coming.
Okay. All right, next, Mr. Bear.
I'm kinda with Mr. Tahar on this one. It's, it's kind of odd to me, we're voting on this during a public hearing because we don't even have any recommendation at this point. It doesn't come until later. We vote on the ordinance, so.
In that case, let me ask the madam clerk or the attorney.
Council President Wu, you have to make a motion to approve or deny the request of the applicant.
Right, because otherwise, how would you know to prove the ordinance later? If we don't take any action.
Okay.
All right, in that case, please vote. And it passes on, no, it's, uh, four-four. So it fails. How can it be four-four? Oh, because they had one ascension. Okay, so it fails on a vote of four-four. Okay, now, at this stage, um...
Uh, Mr. President, I think that we need, they need some explanation because everyone keeps looking at, like, what's next and what is happening. at like what's next and what is happening. From my understanding, since the motion has failed, that means there will not be a reading on the first ordinance.
That is correct.
It did not pass, and so it will not, the zoning will not change. So that is where we are, okay? So everyone's, is that my understanding? Okay, so everyone's looking to try to figure out what happened.
Would it be all right to proceed?
Yes, we will proceed to the next item because it failed, it was a tie.
Thank you very much. Okay, Madam Clerk, request to vacate right-ofway, 116 South Baylin.
Yes, item 6B is a public hearing to consider. Request to vacate right-ofway, 116 South Baylin Street.
Okay, I have no one, unless I'm incorrect, that has submitted a card that would like to speak to this issue. Is there anybody in the, oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President.
It's coming in fairly interesting here because I'm getting strings from about eight places, ask-for or non-ask-for. Please, Ms. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Morris.
Thank you. Mr. Reynolds, Mr. Council President, members of council, this one will probably be a little less complex than the last. This is a request from Mr. Gunther for a right-ofway vacation on South Baylin Street. As you can see from the hatched area marking where he is seeking the right-ofway vacation, this would bring the right-ofway line in line with the properties directly to the south, which had a right-ofway vacation approved in 2000. There was a previous building encroachment that no longer exists. However, the intent of the applicant is to build a residential structure at this location, and in order to do so within the plans that he's proposing, he is seeking to have the same width of right-ofway vacation approved for his property that were, that was granted for the properties directly to the south. In addition to the 10 feet on the ground level, there is a request to grant an additional vacation of approximately five feet of the air rights vacation above the ground level. This wouldn't take it out into the sidewalk area at the ground level, but it would allow for a balcony to encroach on the second floor above the ground level. And to illustrate that, you can see the building here. This is looking south on Baylin Street. This is the lot in question. These are existing buildings that already encroach into the area that appears to be sidewalk. This is looking north on Baylin with the applicant's lot, and this is what's being proposed in this balcony level is what would encroach an additional five feet into the airspace above the right-ofway, in essence, encroaching five feet further above the sidewalk for residential balcony. And your planning board did unanimously recommend approval of this request. There was no split on this.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this issue? Okay, anybody on the council?
Move the approval.
Yes, Councilmember.
Move the approval.
Second.
Okay. Passed unanimously. Before we move into the next item, I am going to exercise the prerogative of the chair and ask that the folks speaking on the next item reduce their speeches from four minutes to three minutes so everybody will be able to have an opportunity to speak. In order to help you prepare, I think Councilman Spencer had rose, raised an interesting point because of the length of number of speakers. Jose Aspin did not get to speak in open forum. He recommended that he be allowed to speak here. Does the council, will the council permit that?
Yes.
Do we need a motion for that to suspend the rules?
No, I think, maybe I'll feel, okay, does anybody object? Okay, okay, Mr. Aspin.
How'd you get that through the scanner?
My name is Joe Abston, 49, South Jefferson. I am a resident and business owner of downtown Pensacola. The packet that you've been given kind of represents a task that I took on about two, about two, two and a half years ago with the bollard program. One of the things that has come up in multiple occasions on multiple venues is that the, entertainment and burgeoning downtown restaurant and retail row that is growing on Palafax, that has been growing for the last five years or so, has a problem. And it is, it is blocking the streets during events, gallery nights, during parades, during festivals, what have you. And the, so what you have is a proposed placements of these commercially-grade bollards. You also have, your second page is the breakdown of what is paid just for one single gallery night for the police presence, which is not necessarily making sure that we are, you know, that the underage drinkers are, we don't have vagrants, we don't have graffiti artists that are, you know, that are running loose. They're really, the police are being used to block the roads, which is a highly ineffective way of getting that done. We want to make sure that downtown Pensacola is looking ahead into the future, and we're not just looking, we're not doing things haphazardly, we're not putting a Band-Aid on things, we're not spending $2,400 every time to close the streets. This is a four-block area that on average gets closed about 14 times a year between gallery nights, wine festival, 12th Night Elf Parades, Christmas Market, New Year's Eve, MLK Parades. It's, I speak to this as a, as a, as a city, as a city resident, as a business resident. So what I'm looking to propose is that the city take up, take up the implant of the bollard system that is used extensively all over the country. Additionally, inside your package, what you have is you have a material bid just for one, one company. This has not, has not been sent out for any kind of major bid proposal. This is really just getting an idea of what this cost savings can be. You have also your, your footprint for placing the bollards into the roads. The last picture is really very interesting because this happened in Colma, California with actually this exact type of product. It stopped a Mercury, I believe it was a Mercury, doing about 20, 25 miles an hour. Now, the ASTM, formerly known as the American Society of Testing Materials, is suggesting that we, that we position these three feet 11 inches apart. This would stop almost any major, any vehicle that would want to come down there. They are quickly removed from, from the, from the streets with a locking mechanism that can be given to all city personnel as well as EMT and a first responder. So it's a very easy way. What this actually does is it gives us a way to look like we are planning for the future. We're not looking like this is an accident or that an accident has happened. We want to show that this can, this can really put a positive spin on downtown.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to make sure that council was aware that city staff is currently, after the leadership of Councilman Spencer and Mayor Hayward, on this particular issue. We're currently in the process of putting together a plan and also looking at available funds for financing for just exactly this particular issue.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reynolds. Mr. Spencer.
Thank you. And I want to thank Joe for staying beyond that first section of open forum. Also, Mr. President, I was the one that encouraged Joe to speak tonight, just so city council members were able to recognize that this particular issue may in fact be something that is coming before us as opposed to just staying sort of confined in the environment of the Downtown Encroachment Board.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, at this time, the request to vacate right-ofway. City Clerk, could you please read the subject of the third public hearing?
Item 6C is a public hearing to consider. Request to vacate right-ofway, Bay Boulevard and Bayou Boulevard.
Okay, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Morris, your presentation, please.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds, Mr. Council President, and members of council. The request before you is a request to vacate right-ofway. It's a little different than the typical request that this, this body sees in that it's a little larger in scale. This is where Bayou Boulevard and Bay Boulevard intersect in East Pensacola Heights. This is Chipley Avenue here to the north. These are two private parcels, and Bayou Tahar is there to the west. The request is to vacate this portion of right-ofway, which is currently unimproved, in order to allow for the applicant to put in a private road that would in essence serve as a permanent pedestrian easement and allow them to put in a substandard access point that does not meet city width and design standards for paving. The applicant has requested that this right-ofway vacation be approved and has suggested language that is in the ordinance that appears later on your agenda if this board were to approve the request, that would reserve that full width pedestrian and bicycle easement permanently in the vacated right-ofway. A 15-foot wide portion of that vacated right-ofway would forever reserve that, that pedestrian easement. This is an aerial showing of the right-ofway. You can see the properties are very wooded. The lighter section in the center is the right-ofway, and it leads down to the actual, the railroad right-ofway, CSX Railroad right-ofway. This is Bayou Boulevard looking south. As you can see, there are a number of trees. This is looking to the north on Bayou where the right-ofway is improved and developed. This is Bay Boulevard looking east. Again, you see a number of large trees. And the applicant is proposing, as I said, to, to have this right-ofway vacated by the city. What that would accomplish would be to divide the right-ofway in half. Essentially, when there are two private owners on either side of a vacated piece of right-ofway, it's divided evenly, and it becomes a part of the parcels on either side. Because the ownership is the same on either side, this would essentially create one large private parcel. There is not the ability to sell right-ofway. I know that's been an issue that was brought up at planning board, and there have been questions prior to this meeting as to whether or not there are any other options for disposal of right-ofway. There are not. You cannot sell legally right-ofway. It is deeded for public use. So the city's options are either to vacate it or retain it as right-ofway for public access. If the city does opt to retain it, the city would either have the option to improve it ourselves or to leave it as it is in its current state. The planning board reviewed this on two occasions last year, and the first occasion, they asked the applicant to meet with staff to see if there were options for allowing access to these private parcels, improved access within the vacated right-ofway. They did meet with the city engineering and public works staff. The proposal they came back with is what was included with your agenda package, which included the drive that would be possibly constructed of pervious pavers with less stormwater runoff impact and reduced impact to tree removal versus what the city has said that our, building to our design standards would accomplish. The planning board reviewed that proposal again when we brought it back to them in recent months and unanimously recommended denial. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll turn to the public, and we have 18 people that have signed up to speak. I believe the first card was Mr. Robert Beasley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, Robert Beasley, 226 East Government Street. The parcel in green, as you see now, is the right-ofway. In 1925, was completely fenced there on Bayou and Chipley. Where you come down Bayou, you would have come into a gate with a brick wall. The Schaefer's built their home there in 1925. It remained bricked with a gate from 1925 until 1979. The Schaefer sold it to Rose Cox Russell. Rosa Cox Russell lived there from 1942 to 1979. She lived behind a gate with a sign that said, "Private Drive." In 1953, the city annexed this East Pensacola Heights into the city. From 1953 to 1979, Ms. Russell lived there behind a gate under a private drive. No suggestion that it was a right-ofway. In 1982, Ms. Russell died in 79. In 82, city staff, city attorneys said we should file a suggestion of lien of right-ofway. The estate at that time was unprobated, it was sitting empty. And the city filed such, noting that the gate was there but should be torn down in the middle of the night, and that's in the city council's memo, city attorney's memo. Now, none of that is why we're here. The estate was approached by city staff and engineering in 2012 when engineering realized that they can't improve this right-ofway for two reasons. One, there's only nine and a half feet at the corner of Bay and Perry, nine and a half feet, not 60. And two, if they have to build under DOT standards, which includes putting in stormwater, they've got to take down all those trees you just saw. The city staff called the estate. Mr. Todd died in 2007. Mr. Todd had this longstanding dispute with the city over whether you owned it or whether he owned it. The city, the state didn't care. The city staff said, "Help us not have to tear down these trees." The state wants to sell those lots. When they sell those lots, they're going to have to sell them presently located on a dirt trail. When they do so under comprehensive plan requirements, the city's going to have to do something. We're all stuck together. It's a hard problem. Couple, couple points. The proposal dedicates 65% of the vacated right-ofway back to the public. It's not just pedestrian access, it's vehicle access down the Bayou portion, it's pedestrian access across Bay. Two, there will be no gate, no impediment whatsoever to public access. It's going to be said 1,000 times, there will be no gate. It's not a promise, it's not a trust me. It's in the ordinance. We specifically required a condition of public access. We're not asking you to trust us. It will forever be public access. Three, $63,000 a year is going to come to the city when these lots have houses on them. Four, it's going to cost the estate $130,000 to put an impervious surface in of pavers to go around these oak trees. Five, the city can't do that. We can do it. The city has to tear them down. The city has to meet DOT standards. Six, I'm out of time. Thank you for your time.
Mr. President, I would like for, request council and the president to allow Mr. Beasley to continue.
Well, the only problem I have is that we allow Mr. Beasley to continue. There's 18, 17 people that follow him. Do we allow all those people the extra time or only Mr. Beasley? Now, if you have a specific question you have of him, you certainly may ask that. Mr. Councilman Johnson.
Yeah, thank you very much, President Wu. Yes, I would like to hear number six, please, Mr. Beasley, and then also hear the other reasons why we should grant this. Thank you.
Sure. Number six, the use that the oppositions are going to hear tonight that they seek to maintain is not a legal or permissible use. It is not a legal or permissible use because of two reasons. One, it gives the public a false impression that they're having, that they have access to the public water body of Pensacola Bay, that there's a beach there. There is not a beach there. There is no public access to the water at the end of that road. They get to the end of that road, they stop, they trespass across the railroad tracks, and bad things happen to people on the railroad tracks, and the railroad's going to tell you about that. Two, what they also use it for when they're not trespassing across the railroad tracks or the public right-ofway is they are parking in the right-ofway. Nowhere else on Bayou Boulevard can you do that. They want to. right-of-way. Nowhere else on Bayou Boulevard can you do that. They want to drive down there. They want to park in the right-of-way, and they want to get out or stay in their cars and do whatever. Important facts, these are facts. There were 172 police dispatch calls to that location in two years. 172. There was a hanging. There was an issue of police brutality down there. Today, there was a 911 call. A person drove down there, parked in the right-of-way, got out of his car, and walked around and started peering through the windows of the neighbors. Today, this occurred. All right? This is the kind of criminal activity that's going on down there. The city needs to stop it. It's a vacated, it's an abandoned land. It's no man's land. But the city doesn't want to tear down the trees. Your engineering department says, "I can't do anything with nine and a half feet." We can. We can improve it. We can dedicate it back to the public. We're not trying to deny these good people the right to walk their dogs or drive their bikes or drive their car down there. That is not what this is about. Finally, and I want to make sure we're very clear about this, the property will not be rezoned. It can't be, nothing else can be done to it. It's residential in use. There's, those lots are already platted. The property owner could not seek to replat. That puts us in the process of development review, which would then put upon us the same burdens the city's got to go through. It would be counterintuitive. We would have to put in a certain type of right-of-way. We have to deal with stormwater. The city engineering's problem is not just the 60-foot of right-of-way and all the trees. It's the stormwater. They have to put in a holding pond down there somewhere in that little connection. Let us do it. Let us pay for it. You guys take the $65,000 a year. We'll let the public in, no problem. There will be no gate, no impediment to access. It's not a, trust me, it's 100 percent in the ordinance. And I really hope, I know it's touchy, keep in mind this, when you hear about horses and buggies using this for the last hundred years, in 1984, the city went out and removed the gate and the fence that blocked that right-of-way. From '25 to '84...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Mr. Larry Hauser.
Mr. President, honorable council members and staff, me too. I know the challenge of the, the challenge you face is how do you balance the needs of the city with the needs of the community? And I don't know of one that I've heard that is more obvious than this one. There is no, there is no loser in this one. The citizens want access. The citizens will have access. The city needs the revenue. The city will have the revenue. We all want trees to be saved. The trees will be saved. I think you've heard the argument. You're going to hear arguments to the contrary, and there has been a pretty significant, I think, misinformation campaign or disinformation campaign. But the reality is just what you've heard, that we're looking at providing access to build a home, providing access for the citizens down there that are used to using that right-of-way, to continue using that right-of-way, and keeping it in as pristine, as condition as it can be kept. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Claire Davis.
I live at 2617 Green Bay Avenue, and I've come down, I heard about this issue, and it's kind of hits close to home with me, because it seems like the public is just constantly having its rights and its right-of-ways whittled away. And I think, obviously, this piece of property is very valuable to people that live in the neighborhood. But the thing that I have to wonder about, too, is the actual value of the property. I believe the value of the property is somewhere around a half a million dollars, and it's almost three-quarters of an acre. That seems like a lot of land for the city to just give away. So I am down here to ask that you think really hard before you give away a piece of property like that. And because it's irrevocable, from what I understand, once you, once you give it away, is that true? Once it's vacated, is it irrevocable? Well, I think that's probably something you should think really hard about before you do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Robert Hurst, followed by Mr. Tim Jackson.
Members of council, thank you. I don't want to pay for a road down there, truthfully. But it's something we're willing to do. We don't want to tear down those trees. We've been told by city engineering planning that we cannot, that city cannot go down there and put down a road to minimum DOT standards without affecting what is, what everybody goes down there for, and that's these trees in this view. I was asked to go to a meeting about a year ago, had no idea what it was all about. There was problems down there in the area, and they want to know what was going to be done about it. Well, this is what came out of it. I was instructed at that time how to file for a vacation of the right-of-way. Had no, I didn't go down there asking for it. I didn't go down to City Hall and just file it. This is what came out of that meeting. With that meeting, Mr. Reynolds was there, Al Garza was there, Jerry Moore, there were several city staff members there, as well as some of the members of the community that had problems with what was going on down there. I told them at that time, "I'm going to build a house down here." You know, "We're going to do it." We've had people asking us for quite a while on that one-acre lot across from us. They want to buy those lots over there. Well, our issue was, we weren't going to do anything until a road got put in, because that's usually the first thing you do before you build a house, is you get your road put in first. Well, I went to the meeting, and I left there, asked a friend, because I had no idea what to do about this vacation of the right-of-way. How do you fill all this paperwork out? Well, unfortunately, my friend is a developer, knew how to do all that. His name was Dan Gilmore, and apparently that's what got the neighbors riled up, because he is a developer. It was just a favor, because I didn't know what I was doing. This is not something I do. I am not a developer. I am a retired police officer. I worked right here with the city for 25 years. I know this area very well. All we want to do is go down there and build homes. We have been told estimated $60,000, $65,000, $68,000 in additional revenue will come in from the homes that will be built on these lots. I do not, I, there's no plans, there's never been a plan to put a gate down there. It's been circulated that we're going to put a gate down there. We're going to block people's access. And that's right, it's a large piece of property. But on the far west side of it, there's a 30-inch forest main that goes down the entire north-south right-of-way. Ten feet either side, so 20 feet of that can never be developed. That's an easement there. Then we've got, we're going to put in at least, trying to put in a 15-foot easement and snake it through those trees with a permeable surface so that the water will be able to run down and get into the soil so we can protect the trees. We've tried to do everything that we could. I understand people are upset. These people are going to be my neighbors. I respect their opinion. If they don't want it, that's their opinion. I respect that. But I've asked and asked for a year now, what can we do to develop this area? And I've been told by city officials here to vacate the property, because I can't put a private road on public property, but I can put a private road on private property and deed the easement back to everybody else. I've done everything I thought we could do. If you have any questions, I'd be willing to ask, answer them.
Thank you very much. Counselor?
I know the current taxes paid to the city are about $3,500. Is that $65,000? Is that the amount that'd be paid to the city?
The $3,500 for, we pay almost $15,000 a year.
No, I'm talking about to the city, the city's portion.
Okay.
Is the 65, the total that you're anticipating?
Yes, once, once the lots are sold and approximate value of houses based on some other newer homes in the area.
Okay, so the share of the city would be less than that. It wouldn't be $65,000.
I was told $65,000.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Tim Jackson, and he'll be followed by Mr. Joe Kirkwood.
Thank you, council, for hearing me tonight. I would like to make a couple of points. One is the representing of at least 249 signatures that were put on a ballot before the first Planning Board turned down this issue. The signatures were, had little to do with trees, plans, pictures, drawings. What they had to do with was the road that we have enjoyed for many years. This is our scenic highway of our neighborhood. We drive it, we walk it, we brag about it, and we preserve its beauty. The thing to note here is, at this point, Mr. Hurst has access. He is welcome to build today, yesterday, a year ago, next year, whenever he wishes to build. He has access. There is a road. It's a dirt road now. The city will pave it when he makes plans to build. The trees that we save today can be blown down in the next hurricane. Trees are not forever. The ownership of his property is not forever. So I ask you to set the pace and maybe discuss your philosophy tonight on how you represent the majority of your constituents on other accesses around town. We do not go to the railroad tracks. We do not want access to the water. We want a drivable right-of-way the way we've always had. We want the right-of-way to be owned by the city, and we want it to maintain protected for generations to come. A partial right-of-way is not a win-win for anyone. The partial we look at tonight is the landing of Duluna. It's a place where we should put a plaque. It's a place that our residents have been great stewards over to protect, to pick up paper, to keep the crime down. We have taken care of that row for years. Whether there was a gate up for a period of time, who knows? But there's a map that shows the original layout of the neighborhood, which shows a wonderful mezzanine all the way around the neighborhood, Bay Boulevard. It's been chiseled away for years, and now we have very little. The tax money that we talk about gaining, what about the tax money of the people that have lived there and have houses there? Mr. Hurst has both sides of the road. I own both sides of my road, 150 feet on Gadsden Street, east of Pickens. I own my property, the property across the street. Should I close that? No. Would it be better for me? Yes. I could change the footprint and offer more housing.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Myers, I believe, has a question.
Yes, yes, sir, please.
Ms. Myers has a question for you.
Thank you for coming tonight, and I share your concerns. It's a beautiful area. I think it's the most unique neighborhood in all of Escambia County. I had a good friend who lived there for 25 years. The trees are magnificent. The neighborhood is magnificent. However, I do have a concern. I have been down, down there. I was down there last night at the end of the street, where the circle is around the tree. We made the statement that the people have preserved and taken care of that area. But I, but I can tell you that from what I've seen, two and a half weeks ago, I was there. I saw a condom on the ground, next to the very tree, I believe, that was up here on the screen earlier. Last night, I was there at 9:30, no, at around 9:00. The garbage can was full. It looked like it had not been emptied in a long, long time. When I was there two and a half weeks ago, I didn't have as much trash. But last night, there was trash all over, all over the ground. And in fact, I called one of the residents over there this morning to ask them to call, to let them know that the, I mean, garbage. I've seen people, groups of people come up from the railroad track. So what concerns me is how involved is the neighborhood in really taking care of that, that type of situation?
I would, I would love to respond to that. I picked the trash up this morning. The trash was in the trash can and overflowing because the parks and recreation had a new person that took over a month or so ago, and that trash can has not been emptied since the first week of December. Now, the fact that one trash can is full in a month's time shows you how little trash is down there. Now, it has come up that a condom was found. Do you honestly think, in any cul-de-sac in this town, once a house is built, anybody will really be parking down there at night? Most of the crime has dissipated due to the police department putting up no parking. Now, they have a right to knock on somebody's window and say, "What are you doing here?" and give a ticket. That's, the crime has disappeared. In 20 years, I have lived in the neighborhood. We drive, we walk that road, and we watch. And the crime is a concern to us. We talked to the policemen that drive down there. We asked them, "What can you do?" They said, "We have no teeth because there's free parking. If they park, we can't ask them." That's why the no parking signs are there. The no parking signs will last until we have a house down there. Once there's a house, people will not park on that road.
Okay, thank you for addressing that concern.
Okay, Vice President?
Yes, he mentioned that once a house is built, then the city would put a public road there. Is that correct, Mr. President? Can Ms. Morris answer that? That once the, a house is built, that, that the city would pay for a road to go into that area?
I would have to defer to our representatives from the Public Works Department as to the feasibility of putting a road in there. However, it's my understanding that if it's built to the minimum design standards, that it is cost prohibitive. And as long as there is access, I don't know if there's automatically a need to improve the right-of-way.
If I may, Ms. Vice President?
Please.
The, the, the issue that we have here was one that we have been working for a solution for some time now. And as Mr. Hurst stated, we've, we've had at least one meeting on the site, and I think we may have even had two meetings on the site itself, as we're trying to find a solution, because essentially, we can't engineer a road down there. We, the limitations that we have to live with are going to be extremely onerous to not only the trees, but we've got to find a place to put a stormwater pond. We've got, you know, just a host of issues when it comes to the fact that at one point, it's so constricted, I believe it's nine or 10 feet, that actually is as much space as there is, period. So from the city's standpoint, we would have to essentially engineer something that's not engineerable, and, and, and at least not feasibly with the amount of money that it would take to do it. But we have a conflict, because if houses are down there, I believe, Ms. Morris, our land development code does speak to the fact that it would not be in compliance at that point.
They do need to have access from a public street or right-of-way. The ability of the city to improve it would be at issue then.
So, you know, that was, that was what was behind the whole efforts of staff to try to find a solution. Mr. Hurst, after having it previously been denied by the Planning Board, the Planning Board specifically asked him to go back and do what he's done now, to find a way to find, to ensure that we have both pedestrian and other access down there. Essentially, what you have is a private street under Mr. Hurst's plan. It will be a private street, but it will still be a street that can be accessed by the public.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Kirkwood. And following him would be Karen Lassard.
My name is Joe Kirkwood. I live at 3155 East Gadsden Street, which is about three blocks from this junction here at Bayou and Bay Boulevard. I've lived in the neighborhood for over 30 years. I've walked down this dirt road for all those years, almost daily. So this is a part of my life here, this beautiful place, this neighborhood. I feel privileged to live in this neighborhood. I never take it for granted. I, I'm with my neighbors, have a problem with this, because it seems that, that the process is upside down. Now, the assistant to the mayor, who just spoke, described the problems down there, and the attempt to bring Mr. Hurst into... and the attempt to bring Mr. Hurst into alignment with a solution that might be feasible. Well, the only problem with that, he left the neighbors out. He left us out. And as I look at this map here, I see a piece of property that belongs to a community. This is not an isolated piece of land. I submitted to you all a map that showed East Pensacola Heights as a whole. You've seen this map. This is a whole community. It is made up of many residents and neighbors. It's a diverse community. You can't invent communities like this. You can't design them. They grow naturally. This issue is tremendously divisive. I was hassled by the police down there today. Three cruisers came upon me and held me for 25 minutes, because I was simply knocking on someone's door, who I assumed was a neighbor, who I assumed knew me. Now, there's a problem with that. There's a problem in our city, there's a problem in our community, and there's a problem in our country. It's called civility. It's called respect, and that's what this is about. Ultimately, that's exactly what it's about. That's all it's about. That's what it was about in the beginning. Talk to your neighbors. We talked to Mr. Hurst after the March meeting. We met him down there. He said he respected our wishes. He didn't want to go against the neighborhood. Well, the city's staff has pressured Mr. Hurst. I get the impression that it's a kind of pressure. I don't fault Mr. Hurst. He's in a difficult situation here. There's got to be a balance. There's got to be a balance for the whole community. Thank you.
Council members, Mr. President, what Mr. Kirk didn't tell you is that after he was arrested and stopped and detained, the three cop cars came. They called Mr. Hurst. I am appalled, as a person who has been involved in the civil rights movement for nearly 31 years, that that type of power would be used against somebody who was trying to participate in democracy, and to find out a neighbor's stance. This piece of property is .82 acres. At the planning board, they gave it a value of half a million dollars. And you can hear that, oh, there's going to be $65,000 worth of taxes. You're not going to get that, because that's only when it's fully developed. And when we met with Mr. Hurst after the planning board meeting, he's going to put three houses and three houses on either side. If he gets the property, he can put four houses. So what I oppose is the city giving a piece of property that valuable and that big to promote private profit for a single person. We are a city. I have been a business owner in the city of Pensacola since 1985. I have practiced law here in downtown Pensacola since 1980. I know what profit is, but I have never asked anybody to give me half a million dollars piece of property, so that I can increase my profit. If you've read the things that I have given you, and I've had nine pages, I love to write letters, and you've probably read them, you have read about your duty as stewards. You have stewardship of many different things. The public purse, the public good. And it is funny that we have never heard these problems before. I've been active in that neighborhood. I was here in 2003, two or three times, about that street. Why didn't anybody talk to me? Thank you.
Madam Vice President?
Yes, I was under the impression that there was no actual value placed on that property. It could not be determined. How is it that the planning board is able to put a value on the property?
Mr. Council President, Councilwoman Canada-Wen, I believe that was the planning board speculating at the value, based on what the adjacent private properties were worth. However, this is right-of-way, so technically, you can't do an appraisal, assess a value, and sell it. It's not something we own fee simple. As I said earlier, it's land that was dedicated for the public purpose, utilities, streets, sidewalks, that type of thing. It's not something that the city can sell per a typical private property, real estate, fee simple value. We can either vacate it, or we keep it as right-of-way. So I believe there was discussion of what a piece of property, if it was real property and not right-of-way, there was discussion at planning board of what the value of that would be, but there has not been, to my knowledge, any type of appraisal of the property, because it's difficult to assess what the value of that would be, that area would be, as it is right-of-way, and it cannot be sold.
Thank you very much, Vice President. All right, Mr. Robert Martin, and he'll be followed by Dr. Glenn Goldman.
Robert Martin, 1465 Platt Place, Montgomery, Alabama. I'm here as a representative of CSX Transportation, Community Affairs, and Safety Officer for 40 years with the company. I ask you tonight to consider seriously, not the material value in this, but the safety value of it. There have been 60 incidents in the first 10 months of 2012 in the state of Florida. Those 60 incidents consist of trespassing on the railroad property. There have been 34 fatalities. Of those 34 fatalities, it equated to 5% of the number of people killed trespassing on railroad property in the United States for the first 10 months. Here in Escambia County, Pensacola, and this general area, over the last 10 years, there have been nine incidents where people have accessed our trestle from Bay Boulevard, Bayou Boulevard area. Most recently was the 24th of March. A young man was seriously injured, walking on the railroad track. Today, I was down there, measuring the right-of-way, which I'll refer to in a minute, but I was measuring the right-of-way, and a gentleman came up with a very attractive Brittany spaniel. He was walking. He walked right by the gate to our property, and he turned around to me, and he said, "How many laws am I breaking right now?" And I says, "Just one, sir." He said, "What's that?" I said, "Criminal trespass. You're trespassing on the lands of another." He said, "Well, I walk down here all the time." So I took time out of my day to explain to him, a Florida statute, that he is on somebody else's property. He said, "I had no idea." He said, "Well, apparently, none of the neighbors in that area have the same idea. I sat and listened to people say, 'Well, they're cutting off my access to the bay. I can't go fishing.'" Again, trespassing on lands of another. I had one lady say, "That used to be our swimming hole. Now, all Mr. Hurst and the railroad is trying to do is cut out our swimming hole. How are they going to get to the swimming hole? They got to trespass." As far as the right-of-way goes, if you look at your map up there, on the corner of Perry and Bay Boulevard, there had been mention made tonight of nine feet, six inches from the corner of one property repeatedly. At the end of nine feet and six inches from the corner of that property, you then encroach upon CSX's property. At this time, that nine feet, six inches ends in the gravel of the road. If you go to the gate that's at the foot of the Bay Boulevard, at the corner there, that accesses the CSX railroad property, our right-of-way is 50 feet wide. It comes out approximately two and a half feet past the gate into the parking or cul-de-sac area that's presently being used. We have had bollards placed there, concrete bollards. They're now pushed them aside. They're down trespassing on city property, and we appreciate your efforts. If anybody has any questions, I'll be glad to entertain them at this time.
I have a couple, Mr. Martin.
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
If I understand you correctly, should Mr. Hurst get the permission to build houses on this property? If I understand you correctly, the people who buy these houses will not be able to go to the water from those houses?
Correct. Technically, they can't go to the water at this time.
The second thing I hear you saying is, we have a scenic park right on the bluffs, and then there's a chimney, that I see people going to the bay constantly. Are you telling me that the citizens are breaking the law, going to the water if they go to that park?
Are you talking about the Bay Bluffs Park?
Yes.
Mr. President, I hate to admit it this time, but I am the one that instigated taking the ramps off the end of all the walkways going toward the bay approximately six years ago. I work with Parks and Recs. They were using that area for clandestine meetings. I spent 48 hours over here typing tag numbers off of vehicles parking there, Ohio, Michigan, Virginia. There might be 1% of the people visiting those bluffs were from Escambia County. It was nothing but a meeting place for people to enjoy whatever people enjoy. But no, yes, sir, they are going down there, and they are breaking the law by going across the tracks at that point.
So you're saying to both of those parks, anyone that goes down there, if they get near the track, to get near the water, they've broken the law?
Yes, sir. To get across that track, you have to break the law. Yes, sir.
Okay. No more questions for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Okay. Next, Dr. Goldman, followed by Francis Michaels. No, Dr. Goldman, but Mrs. Michaels will come up closer, so she can follow you.
Honorable counsel, I'm Glenn Golderman. I live at 200 Bayou Boulevard. It's a couple of houses up from Bay Boulevard. I used to own a house that's contiguous to the property. I used to spend three days a week cleaning up the junk along that road. This was quite a while ago, before the city started doing something about it. And, you know, it was a mess, but it's a lot better now. But I don't want to talk about that right now. I'm thinking about what does a city have left that people from anywhere can go and walk in a park-like setting and see the water? And turn around and look at that green stuff there. How much water view and waterfront there is there? And I can imagine, just imagine, some kid, like 15 years from now, and they're doing some research on community development in Pensacola, and they find out in 2013, the city council gave it away. I mean, that's like giving away, to me, it's like giving away a precious asset, but you can do whatever you want to do. I would, you know, the guy, the trustee is really a nice guy, and he's got a good heart and all that stuff, and he's trying to do something. One of my problems is, he's never shown a picture of what this thing, he wants the thing to look like, so that people can look at it. And it says here that DAPK has requested right-of-way, as in fact, had previously proposed in its original application, but indicated that pedestrian accesses would be reserved in the ordinance, blah, blah, blah. Well, that's a little fluky, as far as I'm concerned, you know. Where do you put the easement? What does the easement look like? How wide is the easement going to be? And so, you know, I think the easement idea has some merit, but as a citizen, I'd like to see what it looks like. But in my opinion, overall, you know, we're going to get a short-term bump if we give up the property and taxes increases, and the neighborhood's going to be gentrified. Some people don't like that or care about it, some people do. But I'm thinking, 10 or 15 years from now, if we give up that whole shooting match, and say we get it down to like eight feet or six feet or something, I don't know if that's a good value for the city. You know, right now, I'm inclined to say, "No, you know, the trustee can come back and revisit it later, when something's more specific, and we could look and see what he's proposing" and that sort of thing.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Francis Michaels, and Evgenia Taylor would be ready to follow her.
Hello, I'm Francis Michaels. I live on 204 Chipley Avenue. I have lived there for more than 20 years, and I am one of those folks that are always walking and looking at that water. That means so much to me. And I don't know all the details, and many things have been brought up. But I am going to say, that if when we were discussing I Street, it was, once the person bought it, then they can do what they like, what kind of reassurance is it for me, that's over 20 years walked in that neighborhood, that he doesn't sell it to someone else, who then does not have that same right-of-way, that this person has agreed with you? Down the road, in history, the property can be sold. The whole arrangement can change. Things change. But, you know, I'm a taxpayer, and I really value that. I'm a retired guidance counselor, 20 years with the school district, and I can tell you, even though the right-of-way may be maintained, would it be comfortable for me to walk down there and relax and enjoy that beautiful bay? Or do I have to worry about harassment issues, which have happened in other times in our neighborhood when things have been an issue? Somebody comes by on a bicycle and starts bugging you? Well, then you can't walk and enjoy that property anymore, can you? So I'm just here, just one vote, to say that I like it the way it is. I've been paying taxes. I haven't asked the city for anything, and that's my case.
Thank you very much. Just a minute, Councilman Myers has a statement question.
I think I'll hold my questions until after everyone, because I may want to hear from the attorney again.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, Gina Taylor. And when she finishes, be followed by Elizabeth Benchley, and then Leah Smith.
I'm Gina Taylor at 106 Bay Boulevard, and I live in the property right adjacent to the green. So y'all know me, I'm the garbage lady. Probably heard all about me, the garbage truck. But that's not all. I have lots to say, but I don't have much time, just because pretty much everybody said. I mean, I can sit where y'all are and rationalize everything, and say, "The trust," or "Is there going to be this right-of-way here?" Or "What about the trees?" We brought all that up. I don't really know some things, because Hurst and I haven't gotten together, we were supposed to, but I couldn't get home from a trip. So the little part that turns onto Bay Boulevard, I don't know. Can we not just vacate Bayou Boulevard? Or if we vacate part of Bay Boulevard, and just vacate the whole thing? Then you don't have the garbage issues, the fire truck issues. Just let people walk all the way around, instead of stopping at my way. When they get to my driveway, and you can't drive anymore, I don't know where everybody's going to go. Are they going to back up? Are they going to, I have a little circular driveway, they're going to turn around there? So I have a lot of questions, but most of them are kind of legal questions. I don't understand the trees. If you cannot pave Bay Boulevard, then why are you worried about those little pockets of trees? Because they would be there anyway if you don't vacate it. There's no issues with the trees. You can't pave it. They're going to be there. They develop the other part. Vacate, if you want to, their part, but I'm confused kind of on the turning of the Bay Boulevard a little bit. And there could be an answer, and I don't know why that little portion is included. Trying to think of everything, because there's so, as far as that arrest today, that was my daughter, who's 22, came out of the shower in a towel. I was trying to get home from Miami. He was probably passing out the flyers, knocked on the door, knocked on the window. He went in the doggy door, scared her to death. She had never seen him. She heard him coughing down the road, it scared her. It scared her. So I apologize for all that. We're not one, she was there alone. I was getting back from Miami. So I do apologize for that. Okay, anyway, I, I, that was a problem. She called me crying and scared to death. So anyway, that's, we don't just call the police. A lot of things are inflated a little bit, I see. I live right there. I don't see homeless people. I, I mean, every now and then, I mean, I mean, the trash, yeah. I mean, if you build houses like they say, it's gonna clean it up. It will be, I'm sorry. Y'all have any questions for me? I do live right there. I, I mean, there's been things like with the gate for the railroad. I've been told I can build a pier across from my house. And now you're saying you're, you can't go across the, it's all confusing.
Thank you very much. Uh, I see Mrs. Myers' lights on, but I believe that might be from her earlier time. Madam Clerk, if I can get you to please clear that. Thank you. Uh, Elizabeth Benchley, uh, and would be followed by Leah Smith.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Benchley. I'm director of the UWF Archaeology Institute, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the archaeology of this city-owned right-of-way. Or maybe it's not owned, but it's a city right-of-way anyway. Uh, City of Pensacola has an archaeology review, uh, process and procedures that were established in nineteen eighty-five and revised in nineteen eighty-eight and were recently restated in two thousand and ten with the reorganization of city government. Um, in nineteen eighty-five, UWF was appointed as the archaeological review agent for the city, and we have reviewed many projects in the city since that time, although not very many recently. And that's one of my concerns I'd like to speak to today. Um, I think we've had a lot of changes in city government organization and also in city staff, and the review process has kinda disappeared. Um, I became aware of this request to vacate city right-of-way, the ordinance or the resolution, pardon me, it's not an ordinance, applies both to city-owned property and to city rights-of-way. Um, I've testified at, at both the planning board meetings, um, on behalf of the need to do archaeology and consider the impact of developing this right-of, developing it or letting it go out of city control whereby it can be developed on the archaeology of the area. There are two spectacular archaeological sites in this location. Um, one is, uh, the landform is called Emmanuel Point, and you may have heard the term Emmanuel Point Shipwreck. We have two Luna shipwrecks just off the coast of this landform in Pensacola Bay. Um, the first archaeological site to be reported in Escambia County, ES-1, is just east of Perry Avenue and originally had a couple of burial mounds and two thousand years of prehistoric Native American occupation on it, as well as, um, artifacts that date to the Luna occupation and British, uh, British occupation and probably second Spanish and early American as well. This is a really spectacular landform and people have lived there for a long time. In the right-of-way itself, uh, UWF reported an archaeological site that was being excavated at the time in nineteen eighty-five by Mr. Calvin Todd, who owned the property both east and west that Mr. Hurst is now attempting to develop. Um, we observed Calvin Todd's excavations and tried to advise him on not digging up everything that was there. Um, and we reported the site to the state and it impacted, it crosses the right-of-way. So any kind of development of that will impact the archaeology and needs to be reviewed by us or somebody else designated by the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, counsel and Mr. President. I'm Leah Smith. I live at 306 Pickens Avenue, just a few blocks away. And I too, being one of the neighbors of this community, use that street on a regular basis. I've lived in that neighborhood for over twenty years, so I'm not a new resident. And it is by far one of the most beautiful places in Pensacola. The bayou and the bay and where it comes together at sunset is unlike any other. I hope more houses can be built there so that others can enjoy. But to block that street with or without a gate would still be an injustice to the citizens of this city, near and far. UWF is even here saying, please do not do this. We have over two hundred signatures saying, please do not do this. Two planning boards turned down this proposal, not just one, but two times it was turned down by your planning board. I hope that you guys will consider what they had as their opinion. I would like to say that there are a few holes in the plan to offer a public access pathway, not only, as I'm sure many of you know, is insurance very high to offer public access in a privately-owned property, but I have no doubt that at the first injury or first drop of a piece of litter, will new owners potentially close that pathway. It is not a win-win for the citizens. We want to be able to drive down that road. We want to be able to use that road. We do not use it as a swimming hole. I'm sorry, there are train tracks there and the water is polluted. It's the scenery. It is the access. And as far as breaking the laws, when you cross or walk on the train tracks, I really have to ask you to reconsider your opinions on that because I see people spray painting the graffiti bridge all the time. That is also breaking the law. Also, the train trestle that is over the water right there constantly has profanity spray painted on it. And these laws that are broken are not done by the neighbors. They are not done by the local people. It's something I think we can solve in another way. Also, there are many other accesses to the railroad tracks other than our little peaceful getaway. All throughout Scenic Highway, there are multiple private stepways from houses down onto the, to the tracks as well. In our neighborhood, there are two public accesses into the bayou area where I regularly take my kayak and go enjoy. I'm not crossing the train tracks at this point. I'm just going there to enjoy and to walk and to the, do those things that these neighbors also enjoy.
Thank you very much, Ms. Smith. Next, we have Lou Mitchell Courtney, followed by Robert Mahan.
Hello. My name is Lou Mitchell Courtney, and I had, I moved to Pensacola nearly twenty years ago. I had the good fortune to find myself living in this small neighborhood hamlet that we are discussing here tonight. I was charmed by the people, the beauty of the old live oak trees and the close availability to the water and Bayou to Hard binding coastline. In addition, just being able to appreciate the history of that area, when you are walking through there, you can feel just centuries and centuries of people who have been there before us and walked those same roads and paths and just being able to enjoy the beauty that's everywhere. The native plants and birds. Uh, I still walk these roads with friends, and I don't want to lose access to any of this area. And I hope that's just, I, I just wanted to share that with y'all tonight.
Thank you very much. Robert Mahan, and he'll be followed by Judith Bennett. Is Robert still here, Robert Mahan? Okay, in that case, we'll move forward to Judy Bennett, and she'll be followed by Harriet Allen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Council members, I have not lived in this neighborhood as long as those who have spoken before me, but there are several things that I'd like to tell you. I have never gone over the railroad tracks to fish, nor have any of my neighbors who are avid fishermen. They do not fish there. That's, those are people outside the neighborhood coming to fish. I can tell you that now. The nine feet they talk about that would be so small to pass is not even on this land that's in green. That nine feet is at Perry and Bay, has nothing to do with this vacation that they wish. I have to tell you that I don't understand, as one of the speakers before questioned, why do they have to have all of that that they're wishing, that large swath of area? Why do they have to have all of that to get to that property? I don't see that they do. I think that this property is a one-of-a-kind property, not just in Pensacola, but in the nation. We have the only coastal bluffs in America. And I don't think this is something that y'all have the right to give away. I think these are things we need to preserve for generations. I don't think you should give it away to whether it's six, four, eight, ten, however many people are going to live down there. I just think it's wrong. I don't think that's a good stewardship of our resources. Thank you very much for listening to me, and I hope you make a decision I can live with.
Thank you very much.
Harriet Allen, 2911 East Jackson Street. Just being here addressing this issue brings up so many emotions for me. I can't tell you how heavy my heart is at the thought of losing access to this area or having it voted by this council that an easement may be allowed in an, in exchange for what we have now. We don't know what the future holds. We know what we have today. When I was a little girl, I would walk with my dad around this area. I was a Bonafay. We helped settle Pensacola, and my family's been in this neighborhood for generations. Bay Boulevard went all along Scenic Highway. Bayou Boulevard was opened so that people could access it. Gradually, gradually, the right-of-way was abandoned. We have limited access. This is one of our only ways to get down there. As it said, it's against the law to cross into the bay and go swimming anymore because we can't cross and over. Who wants to cross the railroad tracks anyway? Right off this area are two DeLuna ships where DeLuna came in and met with the, um, prehistoric Indians of this area and traded. My father, as a boy, would swim on this shipwreck. The waters were clear and people didn't even know the shipwreck was there. He told a local archaeologist about it. He had a collection of coins that he accrued from nineteen, I mean, fifteen forty-nine, and we have all kinds of artifacts from this area. It does not need to be given away. You cannot take giving up this site lightly. Many, there's been council members from the eighties, the Mullet Council was formed for the same reason. You may have heard about the Mullet Council back in the eighties. It was brought by the Todd, Mr. Todd, to abandon this right-of-way at that time. It was determined that it would not be. It was brought again in two thousand and three and determined not to be. It's gone through two planning boards and it has failed. People love this area. You can leave it alone. Leave it alone. Do nothing. I challenge you to do nothing. Mr. Hurst has an acre of land on one side that he could have a road. I've always said, why don't you just put a road down there for your driveway? The other people could have access from Chipley and from the alley. You don't have to do anything with it. Please, leave it alone.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, members of the council, I'm Michael Allen, 2911 East Jackson. Well, that's a pretty hard act to follow, so I'm not gonna try. Uh, I think you've heard all the, all the arguments. I would like to point out that there are some un, that the details have not been filled out, the details of, of, uh, the proposed solution are not very clear to the public. I think the public has a, a right to know exactly what is proposed. What is, uh, what is proposed in this particular resolution? Uh, we're not clear on that. Uh, it seems a little different than when it came up before the planning board. So it seemed a little premature to just ramrod this through. Uh, Councilman Pratt, I appreciate your email about, uh, having a small roadway. I think that that's, uh, that is part of the issue and it's, and it's a good thing to think about. But, uh, I think that there are other methods, other solutions. You don't have to give away this property to get to where we want to go. So, uh, I encourage you not to abandon the right-of-way. We can't back up from that, but I think it's possible to negotiate a reasonable solution. Uh, I don't see why the property can't be developed as it is and a driveway permit be issued and work with the owner to get that done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Mr. Bill Young, followed by Jane Van Eason.
Yes, my name's Bill Young. Uh, I want to present myself as an expert witness on the stormwater aspects of the project. Uh, I was an environmental scientist with the Northwest Florida Water Management District. My primary responsibility was to meet with developers such as the proponent for this project, to review wetland, wetland and stormwater aspects of projects for permitting, to, uh, to interpret the rules, the, the stormwater rules for environmental resource permitting. And one of the thing that strikes me right off what, what he said, which I think is a, a, he grossly misrepresented the facts on the, on the stormwater limitations when he said there wasn't room to build stormwater ponds and that these, that these beautiful live oaks that are very resilient and resistant to storms, um, he says that they need to be removed. Uh, I, I strongly disagree with that. Uh, there is alternatives, and it, it raises questions. I would want to know, he mentioned the DOT. The permit for stormwater does not come from the DOT. The stormwater comes from the Northwest Florida Water Management District. And I'd like to know if he met with the, with the Northwest Florida Water Management District. I'd like to know what happened in that meeting. I would like to know if, if what, what alternatives were considered to use impervious, pervious asphalt? Did they consider using impervious, I mean, I'm sorry, instead of impervious asphalt, did they consider using pervious asphalt? Or did they consider using pervious pavers? For those of you who may not be familiar with pervious pavers, uh, they are these bricks that basically have a square, big square hole. It mostly is a void. Uh, they can be used as, as an alternative solution. And another alternative solution, instead of, uh, stormwater ponds, is swales. Uh, swales are very common, are, are, are very, it's common that swales are used in this situation to avoid, uh, trees such as in this case. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Young. Okay, Jane Van Eason, and then Blaze Adams.
Hi, I'm Jane Van Eason. Mr. President, councilmen and neighbors, I moved, um, to 110 Bayou Boulevard, which is two houses up from the entrance to the, uh, right-of-way about four years ago. Um, and I moved to the neighborhood. Uh, my background is, is in historic preservation. I've moved to the neighborhood because of its distinctness, the beauty, the, um, live oaks. I ask you to do something with this. Don't ignore it because, um, I, I monitor this pretty much all day long. I have been a, a victim of several crimes because of having a, um, a, a right-of-way. We can't ignore the, uh, the socioeconomic problem we have with vagrants. They use Bayou Boulevard from that right-of-way to go down to Cervantes. I've had peepin' time. I've had peepin' times. I've had two burglaries. We found dead animals down within this property. And there's always someone there every day doing something that shouldn't be done. My daughter got accosted by a naked vagrant that was swimming in the water. I would like to be able to use this property, but because of the crime and the, the not being safe, I ask my neighbors who want to be there and use it to take care of it then, to help monitor it and to be stewards of it because right now I can't let anybody I know go down there. I don't go down there anymore. So I do ask that your decision is based on who's going to take care of this property so we can enjoy it as neighbors.
Following, Mr. Adams will be Mr. Gary Sansing.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council and members of staff. My name's Blaze Adams, and I live at 112 Chipley Avenue, which is immediately adjacent to the subject property. What this property is two different things. What it's sometimes, it is an idyllic and, what a bucolic pathway. And there are other times where it's a lover's lane. I work out in the yard on Saturdays, and I see the traffic coming and going all day long. What you can hear are the cars when their oil pan hits the, what hits the incline there. And Shirley Gray hears them coming and going all day and all night. It's not a safe situation in that respect. I do walk my dog down there. I do take walks down there. I don't go down there at night. I would encourage people to go down there at night. What, for every resident who walks through that area, there's probably five to 10 people coming in from outside the area, and they ain't coming down there to see the scenery. And you can look at the trash and tell that, and look at the aftermath of what's down there. So what, there is no easy answer in that respect. It's not black and it's not white. It's both of those things. And that's a situation I think that needs to be resolved. Mr. Hurst has done his best to be a good neighbor. When he took over responsibility for that property, the first thing he did was to take down the vacant house that was a safety hazard and an eyesore. He didn't waste any time doing that once he had responsibility for the property. He is down there frequently clearing the right-of-way. Other people come in and dump on his property, and I call them up, and he comes, and he cleans it up, and he does the right thing. He's trying to do the right thing here. The guy just wants to build his house down there and move his family down there. And there could potentially be five other houses built down there, five other families come down there. That's going to create additional revenue. That's what a neighborhood is all about. It's about new families moving in and new people moving in and a change. And this group is opposed to the continued gentrification of this neighborhood. That's the bottom line. He's tried to compromise. He's putting in a pathway that's dedicated to public access. No one is taking away the public access. It is still going to be there. It's going to be written into the deed on the property. There's as much information out there as you want to look for and you want to find. Glenn, there's a, you know, there's a, what insert in the package that has a map, that has plans, that has everything. Anybody who cares to know and cares to get the information, they've been beating this thing up for the past year to come up with a solution. There is no easy solution. This is the best solution that's been offered. I don't know what else can be done. It's going to continue to have public access down there. You know, when people come down there, if they set one foot off that right-of-way, they're on private property, which is trespassing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sansing.
Gary Sansing, 1517 East Jackson. When I got home, started fixing something to eat, I got worried about this piece of property, you know? It's like right now, we're all getting a little excited, especially an alper like me. You know, I was thinking, this, if you go out in East Pensacola Heights, you go right to that first curb, and there's a road up there. And you go up there, and there's a stone up there where you, it's dedicated, where I go when I need some serenity. I hadn't been up there in a few months, but now I need to. Vagrant's crime, it's everywhere, but thank goodness it's not like New York, LA, Chicago, or Mexico, or Arizona. We live in a pretty nice place. I don't like councilperson Myers. I want to go out there and see it. You know, when I was at home, I couldn't see a map. I said, where the heck is this place? You know, I had a good idea, and then I had another following, councilperson Barr. How much is this going to generate to the city? Not the county, not school board, but to the city. Will it get its way back? I mean, it's money worth or whatever. There's enough questions here. Even though it's been going on for a year, that ain't a lot of time. Maybe to, I think, I forget it, but I do remember the name Dan Gilmore. When I hear that, it perks me right up, gets my adrenaline going. Now I need to calm down. But I would take my time and think this over, and maybe all of you ought to go out there and take a look at this place. And the people are trying to keep it clean, and people do. I mean, everybody's doing, well, not everybody, but most people are trying to keep their neighborhood sweet. That's the best thing I can do or say. Keep it sweet. Make it compatible where neighbors love to. When you get my age, you need help to keep it there, but I'm definitely going to go spot that place out. And I will go, did anyone know what I'm talking about over in East Pensacola Heights? The curb there, and you go up there and look over the bay, and there's a dedication to the man who dealt that to the, to somebody, but I'll be there this weekend. Think long and hard on this one. I mean, if it gets me about my chow, I'm disturbed.
Thank you, Mr. Sansing. That does it for input from the public. We now turn to comments and observation from council. Yes, Councilman Tarr.
I move, reapprove the vacation of property.
Move in a second. Okay. The lights all came up at once. I assume, I would think, Councilman Myers, you were first.
I would like to hear from the other council people before I speak. Yeah, okay. Councilman Spencer wants me to fall on the sword first, I guess. This, I think most people in Pensacola who know me know that I am an avid tree lover and tree hugger. And one of the reasons I love this neighborhood is because of the trees. And I'm sure that's primarily one of the reasons you love it. And this is a really hard issue. I love that neighborhood. It is absolutely unique. I would never want the citizens to lose the right to walk that lovely path throughout that, that whole area. What concerns me, though, is, is safety. Because I've been down there at night, I was there last night, and it's, quite frankly, scary to be there at night. It's, there are places that are very dark there. The street running east, north to south, there are lights there. That, that is well lit. But there are pockets there along the, the shoreline there that are, are very dark. I saw that the trash can had a lot more graffiti on it than it had several weeks earlier. The trash can, as I said, was absolutely full, and it had been, I don't know how it got turned over, obviously. There obviously was a lot of, looked like people had eaten food or just, that, that type of, type of trash. So that, that told me that there's evidence of quite a bit of activity there. I live in a neighborhood that has a very, two very wooded lots. And it has been a real struggle for my neighborhood to keep our neighborhood safe because of the dense woods in that neighborhood. And we've had to take it upon ourselves actually to clear the underbrush in the woods with the permission of the owner of the property so that it would, it would make it safer. I noticed that there were potholes in the road. It's very rough. And it's obvious to me that it's not being maintained in a proper manner by, by the city. So these, these are, these are the concerns I have. Last night, when I was there, I heard an animal in distress, which appeared to be in the woods there. And I asked one of the residents over there this morning, when I, when I called that person to report that the garbage was all over the place around the tree, about the animals. And, and what I've been told is that people frequently drop off, abandon animals there and drop them off. But what I, I would really like to see, it's your neighborhood. And however, there are two pieces of property on either side of that right-of-way. And those people who are going to be building houses there are going to be living right next, adjacent to that right-of-way. And they're really going to be impacted by the flow of outsiders that come and go, and I've seen them come and go through there, along that, that right-of-way. And so, so this really, really concerns me. The, the safety is the primary thing that I'm concerned about. And Mr. Hurst appears to me that his, that, and this is why I'd like to hear, hear a little bit more from the lawyer because what I'm hearing the public say is that you think you're being denied access, but if we vacate the right-of-way, there's going to be an ordinance in place that will assure that the public does have access. I personally would not, I, I would like to have access to that walking area myself. I had my little dog down there last night, and he loved it. So he wants to have access to it. So, I mean, I want to have access to it. So I would not be in favor of anything that would jeopardize the public's right to have access. My objective is, if the city doesn't vacate it, the city needs to live up. Our responsibility to maintain it, to make it safe, and to do everything possible to make you safe. So I haven't made up my mind. I'm just raising some issues. I want to hear from the other council members, and I would like to, again, hear from the attorney just to reassure the public and to reassure me and the council that we are going to have access to that area forever.
Mr. President, may I? Smires, if you look at the proposed ordinance, the language of the proposed ordinance provides as a condition of the vacation, which means that if it's not fulfilled, the vacation is null and void. So it's not a trust-me scenario. As a condition of the vacation, a public easement is dedicated for vehicle access over the portion that would leave Bayou and go down all the way to Bay and then pedestrian bicycle access easement pathway along Bay. There was a descrip, a, a comment that there was no graphical description of that. There is, it's in your package. It was in front of the planning board. That graphical description, there was a mention that there was some changes. There were. Originally, it was 12-foot because our engineers said that would wrap around that first cluster of trees. Utilities, fire, sanitation, they wanted 15-foot, so it went to 15-foot. In addition to that public access easement, there will be a utilities easement, which is the other 10-foot. And so in breadth across the Bayou Boulevard section when you come down, it is 60-foot wide now. It's completely unimproved, but it is 60-foot wide now. The 15, the 10-foot on either side of the existing 30-foot, 30-inch forest main is your first utility. So you're going to have 10-foot of the 60. And then you're going to have another 15-foot of the 60. So that's 25 feet across there of the 60-wide that's going to be dedicated back to, to public access and public utilities. Then when you come down to the termination end, you're going to have the pedestrian and bicycle access pathway improved across the lower southern portion, and that is the portion that runs along the water. So the public access will be, in, in fact, we have an overlay of where they walk now, which is down on the railroad easement, which is actually not proper, but there's some trees people are walking around. Public access will be properly placed in where it should be, and it will be an improved accessway. And that is a condition of your vacation, meaning we are obligated to legally dedicate an easement of the public records. Record that easement in perpetuity. There's no way to pull it back. Once we record it to the public easement, there's no way for us to take it back. We change property owners, they're subject to it. The lots get sold, they're subject to it. There will be a set of covenants and conditions in place that acknowledge that easement. Each deed will acknowledge that easement. And so there is absolutely no concern that you usually have in the zoning scenario where if we do this, what the next guy does, that is absolutely not a concern. It is going to be a condition of every person who takes title to that property. They will be burdened by a public access easement over an improved area, over a well-lit area with pervious pavers, as was discussed by the Mr. Management, the Water Management District.
Thank you, Mr. Sansing. Okay, moving on to Councilman Bear.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have gotten lots of email, as have my fellow council members. I apologize, I'm kind of losing my voice. But I'll make this as quick as I can. I, I visited the property. I met with Mr. Hurst at the property. On probably the coldest day we've had in a while. It was very cold that day, actually. And we walked the extent of the property, and it appears to me right now what we have is a, a right-of-way to nowhere, really. I mean, it is a walkable stretch of, of gravel road, but it ends in a railroad easement and a place that we are not supposed to cross. I have a similar issue with the bottom of Langley where people freely cross the railroad, but that's for another discussion. I think that what we need to consider here is that the ordinance that we will vote on, which we have already stated in some detail, will have the easement that people are requesting. It is a condition of the vacation, and so I see that as, as a positive for the citizens that like to walk down there. I don't see the vacation of the right-of-way as being a problem with any future archaeological excavation. I think that there has been some archaeological work done there in the past. And I don't see that as being a, a, this vacation of the right-of-way as being a major impediment to that. I support the, the history of our area and the ability to do archaeological excavation on any property that we have. This particular stretch of roadway is, it's a blighted area. I mean, the, the, the city has not maintained it. The trash can down there, I think, was, was not something that was proactively put down there by the city. I think it came to that location by the request of, of Mr. Hurst. And, you know, I, I think that he has done a great job of trying to work down there and, and keep it clean, as probably some of the neighbors have done. And I, I thank all the, the people from the neighborhood that have come down. And I, I thank all the, the people from the neighborhood that have come down here. Um, I know that, uh, that this particular property has been in this state for quite a while. And I don't know what the exact crime figures are. I've heard, you know, over 100. I've read some of the statistics I've gotten from the police department where it showed under 100. I'm sorry, I don't know what the exact, um, number of reported incidents or actual incidents that happened down there. I know that the lighting is not very good down there, and it's not someplace I'd like to be at night. Um, and I also think it just becomes a, a challenge. Uh, we have no parking signs down there, but while we were down there visiting, uh, several people came down there and parked. And in several of the emails I've received from constituents, uh, they like to go down there and park and eat their lunch, and they said that they even saw city employees down there doing that as well, which they shouldn't be doing that either. Um, you shouldn't park in a right-of-way. You know, it's, it's especially one that doesn't have designated parking areas. Uh, so I'm going to, uh, support this vacation tonight, and I encourage my fellow council members to do the same.
Thank you very much. Uh, next, Vice President, Joe Cannawick.
Uh, I just wanted to, to ask Ms. Mars if there were any archaeological issues, uh, in reference to that property.
Okay, Ms. Mars.
Councilwoman Cannawick, I don't have any information as to archaeological issues with that, that section of right-of-way. Uh, there, um, I, I don't have any historical records on that.
Okay, and so, building and, and vacating would impact anything?
There's nothing in the right-of-way vacation standards in the Land Development Code that speak to archaeological studies.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Does that do it for you? Thank you. Okay, Councilman Spencer.
Thank you. Um, I'm going to end the mystery, unlike Councilwoman Myers, and come right out and say, um, I do support this request. And it's, it's not easy to support something when there is such a, such a loud, um, formidable wave of, of opposition that it represents, uh, that's represented here tonight and has done a very good job. And I want to also compliment just about 99% of the people that do oppose it for being very respectful, not only in your correspondence, but in tonight's presentation. I, I really appreciate that. But I feel that I've watched this, um, I've watched this particular parcel undergo the scrutiny of the planning boards. I have actually attended those meetings previous to even being on council. And what I'm seeing tonight is a solution that I believe embraces what the users truly want to preserve, and that is what I would call a bay overlook. And this has an overlook of, I, I think, I, um, appropriate proportions and dimensions in the east and west direction, most importantly, overlooking the bay. And I am a firm believer that eyes on the park, eyes on the street, which is a term that urban planners use, makes for safer neighborhoods. You want to have people that at night are in their houses and that, and the, those houses are illuminated. No one cares more about their neighborhoods and their adjacent right-of-ways and public realm, that what's called public realm than residents. So, I think what this plan does is delivers stewardship in perpetuity, which is one of the, the important questions. Does it do that? The answer is yes. I think it solves what Mr. Adams described as a use versus abuse conflict once and for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Pratt.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I, I shared, um, Vice President Cannawick's concerns about the archaeology, and I saw that Mr. Beasley had walked up to address that, and I, I was hoping we could hear from him on that as well.
Sure, certainly.
I just wanted to mention, and it's, um, it was in front of the planning board on the first visitation, um, there is a, a pretty meaty packet over there, and, and, and so some of the stuff I'm saying is in the pack, everything I'm saying is in the packet. But there was an archaeological study done on both sides and across the right-of-way by the land, by the property owner at so, at an earlier point, and UWF participated in that. And there were, there were no sites found, there were no, there were no, uh, recorded events, there were no parts to register with the, uh, with the state. There are sites offshore, but we did do a study. It is not part of the requirement of the vacation, but we did do a study.
Thank you. And, um...
You did, you did, you participated in that? They didn't hire a fire archaeologist?
Uh, thank you very much. Okay, Councilwoman.
Um, I share many of the comments that fellow council members have, have made. I actually had eyes on the streets written down before you even said it. Those were some of my thoughts as well. I think that, that the overwhelming, um, theme that I heard in the, in the comments from the citizens as well as in the, in the emails was an uncertainty of, you know, they love being able to walk down there, to go down there, and they're uncertain, will they be able to, to have that continue? And I believe that by having it in this, um, in this ordinance, we do preserve the right of the, um, the, the residents in the neighborhood, as well as any other, um, people to come down there and enjoy this, this great part of our city. Um, I've heard, uh, I, I have some confusion sometimes on this, that, uh, Mr. Beasley has alluded to, to, uh, drive, and I see that it says in here that, um, it's a, a, a public access along the drive, a pedestrian and bicycle access. I assume that that also means that there would be some driving access if they want to go down, but it'll dead-end. But I think that that's also to preserve the right, the access for emergency vehicles. So, so I'm confident that that will be there and that it will continue as a loop for pedestrians. So, um, I think that, that what everybody else has stated is, is important, that particularly that it's preserved, um, until such time as somebody makes a city council decision to not preserve it, and I hope that they won't. Um, I do want to make one little sideline that we were talking about, the railroad trust or, or the railroad access, and, and I do hope CSSX will work with the city on something under at 17th, because that's a big violation of many people. Anyway, um, but in summary, I will support it tonight. I think that we will be able to preserve the, the overarching concerns of the, the residents and improve the safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, Councilman, uh, Tawar.
Thank you. Uh, I just wanted to say that I, I kind of feel like the overwhelming theme, to me, it seems like, is, is compromise. I think that, you know, a, a lot of the citizens don't want anything done, and, and I'm sure that Mr. Hurst, you know, would love to just get the whole piece of property himself and just not have to do anything, but, but there's, there's a compromise there, and I, I think that that's good to see, and I, I hope we can do more of that. Thank you.
Councilman Baer.
I called the question.
Okay. Motion passes by a vote of one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven to two.
He didn't get a second on that, so I think we were...
No, 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 okay, okay.
He would have seconded it.
Do you need a second on that?
Yeah.
Right here, thanks. Thank you.
It, it was seconded.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, there was a... Okay, at this point, uh, we'll move forward to, uh, Madam Clerk, is there any quasi-judicial hearings?
We need to vote on this vacation. If that was a vote on the main, call the question. As I understand it, there was a motion to a second to call the question, and we voted to call the question. Now we need to vote on the main motion. Is that...
If you, are you clear on that?
If there's no objection, call the question. I don't think there's a...
Okay.
What's the objection, call the question.
That was my assumption, thank you.
Want to get everybody back? Mr. President?
Okay, yes.
Everything was done appropriately.
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay, moving along, uh, Madam Clerk, uh, any quasi-judicial hearings?
No, sir.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Reynolds, uh, may I report?
Nothing tonight.
All right, thank you. Uh, now to Council Communications. Okay, Councilwoman Pratt.
Thank you. I just wanted to say very quickly, I hope to see everybody at the library opening tomorrow, and the citizens are welcome to come to the celebration on Saturday. Oh, sorry. The, I was saying that I hope to see everybody at the ribbon cutting for the library downtown tomorrow, um, and there'll be lots of fun activities on Saturday. I'm really excited for the new downtown library, and I look forward to seeing you there. Thank you.
Okay, um, Councilwoman Myers.
I just wanted to say Happy New Year. And I think this is going to be a great year for the council, and, uh, I just, I'm looking forward to accomplishing great things this year, and, uh, I'm hoping that Uptown will do as well this year as it did last year. And there are great things that happened last year, and I just want to also let the public know that there are many cultural events that happen at Pensacola State College. There, this, uh, next week, we have two, uh, events, uh, dance companies that will be there. The following week, we will have the, uh, Merling Trio there. So, if, uh, you want, uh, access to, uh, great cultural events, uh, some are free, some cost a little bit of money, Pensacola State is the place to go. And that's in the heart of Uptown Pensacola. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Yes.
I'd just like to say that Councilman Tawar and I just declared ourselves midtown.
That's already been designated for Palafoc Street down the road.
Oh, goodness. Okay, any more council communications? Moving on then, uh, Madam Clerk, any petitions?
No, sir.
Okay. Uh, at that point, it brings us to consent agenda. The consent agenda contains items that were unanimously passed by City Council, Committee de Whole meeting on January 7th. Um, time to ask for a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda.
Move the approval.
Second.
Okay, it's moved to second. We have a person in the audience to wish to hold an item that was on the consent agenda. I have to ask the... Uh, I didn't, right, Mr. Attorney?
It's, it's, uh, council's agenda, Mr. President.
That's what my assumption is, right. Exactly.
Not in front of the agenda.
Right, exactly. That's why I asked for the question. Okay. In that case, uh, we had a, uh, we've had a motion and a second.
So, I can't talk about it?
Uh, no, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay, uh, please vote. Okay, and as passion has me, uh, the time to talk about the issue, ma'am, is Monday when we have a workshop prior to the vote being taken.
I didn't, I didn't talk about it.
Now, if there's something that you would like, it is burning, there's no problem with you raising the issue in open forum, which will follow shortly. Okay, moving along. Uh, is there any, let me see, the report now of the Committee de Whole, uh, these are the items which did not passionately. Uh, the first item that came that did not passionately, um, is the review of council executive recommendation that the city council asked mayor to engage Dr. Lila Cox in city employment contract with an annual salary of $82,500-plus benefits, with termination clause stipulating the mayor may fire with cause and only the city council may fire without cause, and providing an annual review of performance and salary. The motion passed seven to Councilwoman, uh, Councilmembers Baer and Myers, dissenting. What is your pleasure?
Move the vote.
Second.
Okay, move to second. Uh, any discussion? Okay, please vote. Oh, Councilman Baer, Councilman Baer, I'm sorry.
Is my button not working?
No, no, it's working.
I can see it down here. Uh, I just have a real concern about the, the future of this position with making a motion. I, I don't know how we're going to define this position in the future, whether this should be a, a resolution or whether it's going to be an ordinance at some point, but, um, I'm just concerned that we're setting a precedent here with this position and future positions, that this is going to be compared to a, a charter position because, you know, we've got a situation here where we don't have many positions where there's a situation where you, the mayor hires and then the council has the ability to do anything. I mean, other than, there's a few where we have to approve the firing of that particular person. And I just see this as a, a, you know, given the current policy of our mayor, that employee, excuse me, employees can be hired and fired by him, and based on email that I received from him stating such, where I asked him about the ability of the council to hire and fire this person, and he fell back on the charter, which states that employees are under his, uh, authority, I just think we're setting ourselves up here to not be able to talk to our own employee here. Um, if she now falls under the city employee guideline as everyone else does, then we may be limited in how we can speak to her. Um, because there's still a memo out there that has not been settled, uh, that still exists, that limits our ability to talk to staff. So, if this goes through, I'm concerned that we're going to have to talk to Mr. Reynolds to be able to talk to Dr. Cox. That's my concern.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilwoman. Um, let me see, I now have Councilwoman Myers and I have Mr. Reynolds. Let me go to, uh, Councilwoman Myers first.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I, I'm not going to support the motion either because I have some of the same concerns , um, uh, Councilman Baer have, has. I feel like that this does not provide the separation of powers that I believe needs to exist between a legislative body and the executive branch. And, um, I've expressed those views to, to Dr. Cox, too, that I would feel comfortable if she were a contracted employee by the council, but I will not support, uh, this motion, uh, because, uh, I do not believe it's in the council's best interest for her to be a city employee.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I just wanted to, to note really quickly that this isn't a policy of the mayor. This is the charter that determines the mayor having a responsibility to hire and fire. And, and, you know, we've been talking a lot about compromise, uh, in the last couple of weeks and even here tonight. And, uh, you know, what you have here is a workable compromise. And, uh, you know, I, I think we all would like to get this behind us so we can continue to move this city forward, where you have a very competent staff member that can assist you. Uh, and, and as I think even those of you that, uh, in the past have had some concerns that, that somehow, uh, staff through me would not be able to assist, I, I hope that you, you have seen, uh, now that you're on council, that that's not the case. And, and so, uh, I, I would urge this council to embrace this measure, and then let's move forward and, uh, put this behind us and continue to make this city grow. Thank you.
Okay, seeing all the lights on, please vote. Okay, we have... Madam Clerk, do you have the numbers on that?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, the next item was Airport Aviation Center LLC Amendment Number Nine. That this... That the, uh, city council authorized the mayor to execute Amendment Number Nine to the lease and operating agreement at the Pensacola International Airport between the City of Pensacola and the Pensacola Aviation Center LLC. Motion passed seven-one. The Councilwoman, uh, Member Myers dissenting, and Councilmember Pratt absent for the vote.
Move the approval.
Second.
All right, move to second. Any discussion? Please vote. Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Last item on the committee report is outside legal counsel. That the city council direct staff to direct County Attorney Doug Sales of Harrison, Sales of McLeoy, at the, and at least two other firms to inquire of retaining outside legal services when the city attorney has a conflict of interest. Motion passed eight-one. Councilmember Baer dissenting.
Move the approval.
Okay, the second. Discussion? Okay, I have one card from the audience that wishes to discuss this, council. Mr. Attorney, I know that on the consent agenda, that we did not have outside input. What is your opinion here?
My, my opinion is that I'm gonna toss the ball back to council and say if you'd like to hear public input, that's permissible. If you don't wanna hear public input, that's permissible. It's, it's your discretion.
If you'd like public comment, this is an action item, and the question has, when it's an action item and it's not on the consent agenda, it is allowed to allow the audience to comment on that particular action item.
Okay, does any, anybody object? Okay, and, yes, Mrs....
I, I just wanna say that council has always allowed public comment on action items that are not on the consent agenda for as long as I've been coming to city council. That, that's been our policy.
Okay. Councilman Baer?
I'd just like to mention why I voted against this. It was kinda sprung upon me. I, I didn't really know we were considering this particular action. I think that we need to go a step further. I don't think it's just a conflict of interest. I think the council needs its own attorney, which is why I, I didn't really support this. If this is a step in that direction to get real representation for the council, then I may be able to support it at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, Mrs. Watkins?
Before my time starts, did you say that usually you, the council did let people talk in the consent agenda in the past? No. Okay, I, I just wanted to make sure. All right, um, I just, I'm just concerned about spending more, more money on more attorneys, is, is all. And I'm just wanna ask you why the council feels like they have to have a separate attorney, because, you know, we're paying this attorney a lot of money. So can, can anybody, can you give me your thoughts? Why? Can, Dr. Wu, can you allow them to talk?
Uh, council, they don't need my permission. Councilwoman Myers?
Well, it, it's real simple. Mr. Messer, at times, has stated he has a conflict of interest. So when those rare occasions occur, we have to have our own attorney, because otherwise, we don't have representation. So, so that's why.
What, what have been the conflicts of interest?
Well, you'll have to ask...
Mr. Messer, what have been the conflicts of interest that the taxpayers may have to spend a lot more money?
President Wu, will you want me to handle it?
Please.
There's been one conflict of interest since I have been city attorney, and that's when the city council wanted to investigate the mayor. And, you know, as the Bible tells us, one man cannot serve two masters. You know, a law of honor betrayed the other. So at that point, it, it seemed absolutely impossible for me to sit here and advise the body trying to investigate one of my clients.
You just said one of your clients, sir. With all due respect, Section Five Point Zero Three says city attorney. The city attorney shall serve as a chief legal advisor to and shall represent elected or appointed officials, boards and commissions, and employees in the course and scope of their official duties or employment respectively. The city attorney shall represent the city in legal proceedings and shall perform in any other duties prescribed by the state law by this charter or by the ordinance or resolution. The mayor shall appoint the city attorney with the consent of the city council by an affirmative vote of majority of the city council members. The city attorney may be removed from office with the concurrence of the mayor and the majority of the city council. I don't see where you can make a separation of who, anybody can make a separation of who the, the city attorney can represent, because the taxpayers are paying for that person. So, yeah, why are we gonna spend more money on another attorney to represent the council? It's kinda like, it's almost like the Republican Democratic Party now, I mean, with the mayor and the council. It's like, can't we, can't we work this out? Anybody?
Well, I, I see Councilwoman Pratt's light on, but I don't know, she wants to address this issue or not.
Thank you, Mr. President. In this case, it is, when there is a disagreement between the mayor and the council over the interpretation of the charter or the investigation powers, as he mentioned, we also sort of ran into this, it wasn't quite this way, but with the CRA, when the CRA wanted to pursue, pursue something which the mayor did not want to pursue, and we needed legal counsel to do that. It's, it's, by the structure of this charter, there are going to be times when the mayor and the council have a disagreement about the legal interpretation of the charter. And this is giving us the ability to have an attorney who is our go-to attorney. The mayor would probably want to find his own go-to attorney for this kind of thing as well. And it's just a structural thing. Because of the way the charter is, there are gonna be disagreements, and, and we need that resource for the future. Thank you.
Okay, that, that's a good point. So, it's do, basically due to the charter that we're in this...
These, these are conflicts, not his personal issue, you know, not, not, I'm representing this company. It's, it's a charter problem.
Okay, so shouldn't we, shouldn't we address this? Shouldn't we go back and look at the charter and review the charter then? Because it's just costing us more money.
Okay, I, I see Mrs. Myers' light on. Do you, would you like to wait till she finishes, or do you have something that addresses?
That was a question.
Well, I, I agree with Councilman Baer, that I, I think that the, I think he said, well, I don't know if he said it or not now, but I, I believe we should have our own attorney. The legislative body should have its own attorney. But unfortunately, that's not in the charter. Okay, so, right now, we just have one city attorney. But, in my opinion, I think that the council should have its own attorney. But right now, we have to follow what the charter says. We have one city attorney. And, like Councilwoman Pratt said, usually, these conflicts have to do with interpretation of the charter. So, that's where we are, are right now.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Ms. Watkins, before you leave, just to be clear, a minute ago, you mentioned that I had the ability to stifle someone's, possibly the ability to stifle somebody's vote. All these people sitting up here, like myself, are elected by the, by the citizens. The only thing I try to do to the best of my ability is to determine the order in which folks speak when they do. But I certainly do not have the right to keep anybody who has an opinion from speaking out.
Oh, okay.
Okay, but thank you, thank you very much.
I, I thought the last, Sam Hall said it all had to go through him.
No.
So, okay, all right, thank you.
Thank, thank you very much. Okay, please vote. Okay, question one, no vote. And Mrs. Myers was absent for the vote, and then the rest are four. Okay. Chairman Spencer, do you have a report from the CRA?
No, we did not have a previous CRA meeting.
Okay, now it turns to Madam Clerk. Ordinance is on the first reading.
Item fourteen A will not go forward at that public hearing, fail. So we'll move forward to item fourteen B, is proposed ordinance number zero-two-dash-one-three, an ordinance to be entitled, an ordinance closing, abandoning, and vacating a portion of the Bayland Street right-of-way in Pensacola, Escambia County, State of Florida, repealing clause and providing an effective date.
Move the approval.
Second.
Okay, please vote. Okay. Madam Clerk, is it?
Item fourteen C is proposed ordinance number zero-three-dash-one-three, an ordinance to be entitled, an ordinance closing, abandoning, and vacating a portion of the Bay Boulevard and Bayou Boulevard right-of-way in Pensacola, Escambia County, State of Florida, repealing clause and providing an effective date.
Move the approval.
Second.
Okay, please vote. Passes on a vote of eight to one. Okay, Madam Clerk, resolutions?
You know we have all that right.
I'm sorry.
I'm giving Councilman Johnson some... Sorry.
Item fifteen A is proposed ordinance number twenty-nine-dash-twelve, an ordinance to be entitled, an ordinance amending the code of the City of Pensacola, Florida, amending provisions of the deferred retirement option plan, amending Section nine-dash-nine-dash-four-G for reducing interest earned percentage for the police officer's retirement fund, amending Section nine-dash-nine-dash-four-H for not allowing cost of living increases for the police officer's retirement fund, providing for applicability of ordinance, providing for severability, repealing clause, providing an effective date.
Move the approval.
Second.
Okay, move to second. Please vote. Okay, that passes unanimously. I believe that was the only ordinance on second reading. We now have resolutions. Madam Clerk?
Item sixteen A is Resolution Number zero-one-dash-one-three, a resolution to be entitled, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor of the City of Pensacola to execute on behalf of the Port of Pensacola and Economic Development Transportation Project Fund Agreement with the District Secretary or the Director of Transportation Development of the Florida Department of Transportation for a project entitled Port of Pensacola Infrastructure Improvements.
Move the approval.
Okay, move to second. Okay, any discussion? Please vote.
Ms. Myers?
I voted yes.
Okay, pass, ma'am. Madam Clerk?
Item sixteen B is Resolution Number zero-two-dash-one-three, a resolution to be entitled, a resolution authorizing and making revisions and appropriations for the fiscal year ending September thirty, twenty thirteen, providing for an effective date.
Move the approval.
Second.
Okay, move to second. Any discussion? Please vote. Okay, passes unanimously. Thank you, Madam Clerk. I believe that now moves us to unfinished business. Is there any member of council that has any unfinished business? I would ask that if you, what you have, be stated in a form of a motion so we can follow rules of debate. Okay? I don't know who went on first, but I'm gonna go Councilwoman Pratt first.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to move that we untable, pull off...
Remove from the table.
Remove from the table the, the CMPA nominations.
Second.
Okay. Now, I am going to have to rely on the attorney or the clerk. From what I understand, to make the motion to remove from the table will take a supermajority of six.
Yes, sir.
And the matter then is referred to the Committee de Whole to take action on at our next Committee de Whole meeting.
That, that would be my recommendation, sir.
Okay. Is everybody clear on what we're voting on? So we have a motion to remove it off the table. Okay, and then it takes a vote of six. If that gets passed, then we will be discussing this again at our Committee de Whole meeting on Monday. Everybody with us? You have to talk to the person who made the motion.
Okay, and, and I guess...
This is not debatable either.
Yeah, I think that, that we have some rules and procedures we're gonna have to cover on this, because, you know, I'd love to expound on my reasoning, but I think I'm not supposed to.
That's correct. Okay. All right, in that case, what we're doing is voting to take it off the table. Okay, please vote. And so it passes. So we will then have this on our agenda. Yes, thank you. Okay. Okay, any other unfinished business? Councilman Johnson?
Yeah, thank you very much. And I'm gonna make this real quick. I know it's getting late. We've had a long night. But we talked a little bit about the Restore Act funds the other afternoon, and I just would like to ask that, the, the city administrator, if I could, sir, that, do we have a list of projects that, that I could add one to, or where we at on our list of projects for Restore Act? Do we have, does the City of Pensacola have a list of projects, preferred projects, if we're able to get, be granted some Restore Act funds?
Okay, now, before I allow you to answer, if I understand correctly, what we're doing now is trying to get things in a form of a motion so we can then vote yes or no on it.
Okay.
And if I allow you to go forward, then I'm gonna have difficulty with the person who follows after you. So can you think of a way of just bringing it?
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we are delivered within ten days, that being the city council has delivered the list of projects that the City of Pensacola are gonna bring forward for Restore Act funds.
Second.
Okay. All right, all, all in favor? Yes.
Yeah, I don't know. May I speak?
Certainly.
I just, I, I, I support it in general, though if there's not a list, then, you know, or at least a process, you know, basically information on how, how that process is gonna work would be, I hope, acceptable. I, I think it's, this is sort of a friendly conversation kind of motion, so I hope that the administrator can take some leeway in the motion. Thank you.
Okay. Please vote.
Can you please restate the motion?
Yes.
I'll, I'll, I'll restate the motion that, that the mayor's office delivers to this city council a list of Restore Act projects that will be brought forth if the city is able to enjoy in Restore Act funds. If there is no list available, if we would also have that information delivered to us within ten days.
And I second.
Are you okay, Councilman?
Yeah, I think ten days is a little quick.
Yes, and I think that's what Councilman Pratt was trying to point out.
Would you be comfortable with thirty days?
I will amend my motion and make it thirty days.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other, there's three lights here, and I don't know if y'all wanna speak. I'm sorry, Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just so we don't start down a path of where we're being directed to give information within a timeline. I, I, I have no problem giving this council information when it is available, when it was, when it, when it is requested, if we have it at that point. But I, I do think that establishing a timeline or, or a, a number of days is problematic. And if we could have a little more leeway and, and put out a request for information, I, I think we're okay then at that point.
Okay, I believe Vice President, Will?
Yes, I, I had a point of thought on something else, but I don't, I don't have the problem with the timeline. I mean, the, if the mayor does not give, have a list available, then nothing precludes the city council from developing its own list and presenting it to the mayor to include in, to his list as well. So I, I don't think that we necessarily always have to wait for the mayor to come up with this list, but that the city council itself thinks of projects, 'cause, you know, we have things in our own district that we would like, as well as thinking about the city as a whole. So, they've been talking about the Restore Act for quite a while, so there are some ideas and projects all out there on the table. If nothing is concrete, there has been things that have been talked about, and I would simply like to know what those things are as well.
Okay, very good. Councilman Baer?
I was gonna say briefly, thank you, Mr. President. You know, the Restore Act, this group is supposed to be seated by the end of this month, I believe, and if we don't have a list of projects, I would be surprised. So I think we do need to get something if the mayor's office is working on that. Otherwise, we do need to create our own list.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm sorry, Ms. Myers, I allowed him to speak twice before I came to you once.
That's okay.
I'm sorry.
That's fine. I agree with Councilwoman Canada-Win. I don't think that this council has to sit back and wait for the mayor to come up with projects. We all represent districts, plus I want to remind council that we have an environmental advisory board. And it seems like to me that we should be engaging our environmental advisory board that has some really great environmentalists on that board in terms of assisting us in coming up with project ideas. So, I mean, I'll support the motion, but I just, with the understanding, you know, that certainly, the motion certainly doesn't preclude the council from coming up with ideas and also asking our environmental advisory board to assist us.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Ms. Reynolds and then Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President, and just very quickly here. If any councilperson has any projects in their district that they think are available for Restore Fund, please let us know. And, you know, it's not your list and the mayor's list, it's the city's list, and there's no, there's no, I mean, there really shouldn't be an us or them on a list of the projects that we're gonna bring before the Restore, looking for Restore Funds, I mean, I, that's all I'll say, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reynolds and Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, well, you know, every long journey starts with the first step, and what I'm trying to do is trying to figure out, I think one of the other councilpersons said that there's gotta be a list out there. I mean, we already are starting to get a list, I'm sure, of projects out there. I mean, why aren't we vetting those projects? Why aren't we bringing them before council and the mayor's office? I mean, we're all in this together, we're just, we're trying to figure out what's out there. What are we considering? Are we considering a ferry? Are we consider, what are we considering? We really don't, you know, I know that there's somebody that sat around and thought of five projects that if we were able to get Restore Act funds, that those will be the five projects that we will bring before that committee for possible funding. So there's ideas out there, I don't, are we, this isn't a poker hand. I mean, we're not, we're not, we're not, we don't have a poker hand back, oh, we're gonna hold our list until the last minute and then we're gonna spring it on somebody. I mean, we're all in this together, and there's no poker hand being played here by me, I'm just trying to figure out what we're talking about. I'm sure that there's somebody in this building right now that has an idea of where Restore Act funds are gonna be spent if we are able to enjoy those funds. And to have a poker hand to where we're just holding back, well, we're not gonna tell anybody until the last minute, I don't think that that's really acceptable to this council. I think it's an issue of transparency. What are we talking about exactly? I mean, and I don't think that that's really a big deal, and to me, to have pushback on having that list brought forward, really, I don't understand why we would have pushback. I can tell you that as far as our appointee, I was talking to a county commissioner today, and he said that the mayor must bring that name forward by the eighteenth of this month, which is, last time I checked, eight days from now. So that name's still out there too, but, you know, let's be transparent, let's get this list out here, let's all add to it, share our ideas, if they're good ideas, bad ideas, add to the list, delete from the list, but I don't understand why we can't just get this list out here of projects that we think are valuable to this community to use with these dollars if we're able to enjoy Restore Act. It just doesn't make any sense to me. I don't know why we're holding back. Let's, okay, you know, these are the projects, council, this is what we're looking at, and then we can offer input, and that's really it. There's no game being played here, I'm just wondering what the city is looking at. I've got some ideas myself, I'll be happy to share those with anybody at any time. So I just don't really see what the big deal is of holding back. Thanks.
Here, Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. President. The city administration is holding nothing back. Let me just be absolutely clear. We're not playing any games. As I stated earlier, I will get the information to this council as soon as practicable. Thank you.
Okay, we're ready to vote. Is there, ma'am clerk, can we read motions since we've had so much discussion?
There's been a motion and a second.
I'm sorry.
There has been a motion and a second.
Right, I mean, could you please read the motion as you have it?
That a list of Restore Act projects be submitted to the council within thirty days.
If possible.
If possible, if there is a list, yes.
Okay, is everybody clear? Okay, please vote.
Councilmember Myers?
Something must be wrong with my, okay, did that do it?
Yes.
I need to have this worked on.
Okay. One no, seven yes, and Councilman Spencer absent from the vote. Now, I believe we move into new business, see if any member of council has any new business, and again, I ask you to please state it in a form of a motion so we can debate. Councilman, would you?
I just, I just had a question.
Certainly, go ahead, sir.
The last motion we approved started off as a question by Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
And then you asked him to formulate it into a motion?
That is correct.
Okay, but you can't get a question answered without?
What we're trying to do is to cut down, and what was happening in the past is that we would get to this section of the evening, and we would then almost have another meeting. And so what this allows the people to do is whatever's being brought up, rather than sit here and talk for two hours, to find out if the will of the council to proceed with that issue or take it up at another time. I don't know if that answers your question or not.
Yeah, it answers the question of the process, but the question, to me, could have been answered very simply, did they have this?
It possibly could.
Yeah.
The dilemma I find myself is, right now, I'm having to dialogue with you after not allowing him to do it, and so you've led me into what I've been trying to prevent.
I hear you, and I understand, but I just question whether it was really, it's really necessary to make a motion out of, just trying to get one answer to a question. I'm, I got you.
Okay. Ms. Myers, Councilwoman Myers.
I got a couple of things I wanted to bring up under new business, but the first thing, which I was not gonna bring up, I'm gonna bring up now. I'm gonna make a motion that the president's ruling that we have to bring up unfinished business or new business by a motion be rejected by the city council. And I'm making this motion because I just think it's very awkward that a person has to make a motion in order to just ask the city administrator a question.
Fails for a second.
Okay. I'll go on to my next, I guess I'll make a motion. I'm gonna make a motion that when we have our rules and procedure meeting, which I think, understand will be in a couple of weeks, that even though this doesn't fall under our rules and procedure section, that we discuss reducing the size of the council from nine members to seven. And I base that on the statistics I've gotten from other cities that the Charter Review Commission looked at when they drafted our charter, notes from the Charter Review Commission, and I think that we could have a much more efficiently run council with seven members rather than nine. So I would like to see a discussion about that at our meeting when we have our rules and procedure meeting.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
I would, did we have to vote, or is that just something that?
You're correct.
Well, did she make, she made a motion, that's correct.
Right, she made a motion, it was second.
Oh, it was second, and so now it's discussion.
Yeah.
May I discuss?
Sure.
Okay.
And this is one of those things that I feel is up under, that we need to talk about up under rules and procedures as well, and especially when we have new business that comes up. When you, none of us are prepared to really think about, and it's a wonderful, you know, that thought, even to the review of whether or not we need to go back and review the charter, whether or not we need to reduce the council. We've brought up an item up under new business at the very end. Now we have to come up with a vote without any information before us, without anything. Only person who has did their due diligence here normally is the council member, and that's council member-
Right, now, if you would allow me, I believe that if we pass this, it simply means that we will move this item forward to examine it another time. The purpose is not to bring it before this body and make the decision this evening. All I'm trying to do is limit debate on this. All we're saying is this important enough for us to take a look at. My intent is certainly not for us to spend the next four hours discussing it and then take a vote.
Well, it's same purpose, but we will talk about it up under the rules and procedures when we have that meeting, about how to introduce new business. And I think when we look at our agenda, and that's one of the things that I've highlighted here, so, and how to introduce new business and what that process should be, and I think that is a discussion that we have to have, because too many times when we do the new business, we make this motion, some things should go forward, some things should not, some things are married and some things don't.
Right, and that's-
So you don't have enough information, even for sometimes for people to go and take all of this investigative time and staff time up under this. So it should be killed at this point.
Well, no, Madam Vice President, if you vote to move something forward, it certainly does not obligate you after hearing all the facts of still continuing to support it. All you're doing is saying you think it's important enough to take a look at. So, in other words, the purpose of doing it this way is to streamline what we're doing, but we're certainly not by any means asking to make any decision tonight. And if you make a decision to move an item forward, it certainly does not commit you in the final analysis to supporting that item. All you're saying is it's important enough to look at, and it keeps us from another thirty minutes of debating now whether it's important enough.
Okay, well, you know, that's fine, I have a different view of it, but we can deal with it later.
Certainly, thank you, Madam Vice President. Let me see, Councilman Pratt?
Thank you, Mr. President. I know that the, oh, did you say Bear or Pratt? You looked that way, and I heard Pratt, I apologize.
I meant to say Bear.
Yeah. I have strong opinions on the topic, and I know that others do as well. I think, though, that the rules and procedures meeting really needs to be focused, I mean, we're gonna have a plentiful plate with how do we bring up new business, how do we, you know, handle tabling things? I think that that item belongs in, if it needs to be in a special workshop with other things in a charter workshop, because it is a charter issue, we aren't gonna be able to change it in a rules and procedures policy meeting. So whether or not you support having that discussion, I hope that you will not support having it in that rules and procedures meeting. Thank you.
Now, are you proposing a substitute motion or?
No. I just, I'm declaring I'm going to vote against this for various reasons, but I'm urging the council, even if they don't agree with the other reasons I might have, it's not appropriate in that meeting, so if they have other ideas and when they wanna talk about it, that's fine.
Very good. Councilman Bear?
I'm gonna agree with Councilwoman Pratt on this one, Mr. President. This issue is not germane to a rules and procedures discussion. If we're gonna talk about charter issues, we need to have that in a separate venue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Myers?
I don't have anything, so.
Okay, in that case, please, I'm sorry.
Call the question.
Please vote. Okay, it fails on a vote of four to four. Okay.
What do we vote on, by the way?
Your motion.
Your motion.
I thought that's what we-
Yeah, fails on a vote of four to four. Okay. Any other new business? Okay. That now brings us to open forum. We have two people that indicate that they would like to speak in open forum. Mrs. Lisa Watkins, and she will be followed by Mr. Mark Taylor.
Okay, I don't wanna beat a dead horse here, but I gotta tell you, people are hurting in Pensacola. I mean, you know, I'm not personally hurting, you know, you guys all, you know, have careers and good jobs and good investments, but we gotta get work back to the people of Pensacola, and I was gonna speak about that in the consent agenda, which I couldn't. Basically, I was just gonna ask you to make sure that the money, the promotional fund grant agreement goes, all the money is spent in Escambia County, the marketing, the landscape, and the maintenance. We have too much money, taxpayers' money, going out of this city and this county. And the fact that people are not paying attention is not appreciated one bit, and don't even realize that I'm even talking to them. Still don't realize I'm talking to them. In the COW, Mr. Tahar, you said that you ran for council to promote economic growth, and I appreciate that, and I hope that's true. I hope you fulfill that promise. One of the core measures of economic growth is to make sure that our citizens, the citizens of Pensacola, are employed. I own a lot of rental houses, and I lost three renters since September because they could not find jobs, not because they didn't wanna work, they could not find jobs. One went to Iowa and two went to Mississippi. And, you know, these are educated people. My partner was laid off for three months this summer, is fortunately back to work. That three months, in those three months, we lost what the average person in Pensacola makes in a salary, because my partner happens to be extremely educated and has a very good job. Pensacola is suffering. Look out of your windows, please, we need to keep this money in the city and in the county and use the people that live here, okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Watkins. Mr. Taylor?
Thank you, Mark Taylor, eleven eleven East Moreno Street.
Oh, Mr. Taylor, I'm sorry. I just noticed the Councilwoman Myers' light is on. Councilwoman, do you wanna speak now or speak after Mr. Taylor?
Mr. President, I just wanted to address Ms. Watkins and tell her that I was listening to you. I really appreciate all the time that you spent coming down here to the council. I see it's almost nine thirty and you're still here, and I really appreciate your passion for serving the citizens and the great work you do with your video business. You are very much appreciated. I just want you to know that.
Okay, I'm sorry, Ms. Taylor.
No worries. Mark Taylor, eleven eleven East Moreno Street, City Council President, City Council. I'll be quick. First of all, thank you for untabling the CMPA appointment. If y'all restructure that committee in two months from now, it won't matter, we'll do the best we can for the time that it's there, and so thank you, and hopefully the votes will- And hopefully the votes will go well next time. And then the second thing is that Mr. Johnson brought up the Restore Funds. And just, I don't have a presentation or anything to put in front of you, but for a few months, we've had restorepensacola.org and you can check that out. It's just an idea, actually, I visited with a CSX guy here tonight and exchanged information. But it's, it'd be probably a $30 million plus project, but an idea of moving the railroad tracks, opening up 18 miles of waterfront along Pensacola. Dr. Pratt's shaking her head because I think I've emailed her about it. And it would solve a lot of issues. They were talking about all the criminal issues. There was hundreds of fire and police issues, getting stuck in train tracks. Obviously, Mr. Reynolds mentioned on Monday, I live 10 blocks or so in the office, it's six blocks. And you do, you hear those trains thundering through. You'd keep a north-south spur coming off of I-10 there that would pick up the ports. We wouldn't lose anything there. But only out of about 12 trains, only about two of them actually go to the port. So you'd be diverting over 10 trains of a normal day or two-day cycle. So it'd be huge, hundreds of thousands, over 800 parcels touch the railroad tracks, over 800 parcels. You're looking at huge economic development for that, increased taxes, growth, all that. Make the Maritime Park look like nothing. The city controls 80, 90 acres along the waterfront right there with the Bay Bluffs Park and others that the state owns that we're involved with too. So, I mean, make the public access Maritime Park look like nothing, huge. I think it'd be a great project. Check it out. We also have a Facebook page, facebook.com/restorepensacola. So anyways, we can talk more later, but since it came up, thank y'all so much for the hard work.
Thank you very much, Mr. Taylor. I have just two quick things and then we're done, unless anyone else has anything to say. Since this is the very first meeting of the year, I wanted to reiterate something that someone else had mentioned, but I feel important to mention it as we start the new year. There was a sunshine violation that was charged against the mayor, Councilman Spencer, Councilman Gerald's, and myself regarding a press conference that we attended. I want to inform the public that the state attorney investigated these charges, interviewed all the people involved, reviewed the tape of the press conference, and found out that there was no violation of any sunshine violations. And the reason I mention this is when you go and charge somebody with these violations, you're getting at the person's integrity and honesty. And I just wanted to make sure the public realize that it has been investigated and there was no substance to the charge that was found by the state attorney. Councilman Myers, I noticed your light on.
Yes, I just wanted to say that I'm the, I'm one person, I don't know if there were any others, who filed a request to the state attorney to look at this issue. I believe that there was a violation of the sunshine based on all of the case law that I've looked at. There are two types of violations. They're criminal and they're civil.
I have a point of order. This is not an open forum discussion.
So, well, I feel like I, you know, since I'm the person that's obviously the one who filed the complaint, that I should be able to address it.
Well, I'm raising point of order on what the chair did as well. He should not have addressed this issue during open forum.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Second thing that I'd like to do is I'd like to commend this body for how they conducted themselves this evening. We had two extremely, extremely difficult cases come before us. And I believe that this body handled themselves with dignity, deportment, and a lot, a lot of dignity. Today, tonight was democracy in action. And I want to commend you all. It may seem for the new folks that four hours is a long time to be in a meeting. If you talk to the old folks, they'll tell you you're getting out of here probably about three hours earlier than probably normal. So with that, I see two lights and I'll be quiet. Councilman Myers?
Oh, I've already spoken.
Okay, Councilman Bear?
Move to it, John.
Okay. And with that, we are adjourned.